The Mendocino County Planning Commission to Order. Effective March 27, 2020, the Mendocino County Planning Commission meetings will be conducted virtually and not available for in-person public participation. Meetings are live streamed and available for viewing on the Mendocino County YouTube page In order to minimize the risk of exposure during-
Taylor, can you go get Sam?
Yeah, I was looking for him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could someone unmute themselves? We're getting some background feedback here. Go ahead and continue, Marilyn. Thank you.
In order to minimize the risk of exposure during this time of emergency, the public may participate digitally in meetings by sending comments to pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org or orally via tele-comment in lieu of personal attendance. All public comment will be made immediately available to the commissioners, staff, and the general public as they are received and processed by staff and can be viewed as attachments to this meeting agenda at the Planning Commission Agenda page. We thank you all for your understanding during this difficult time and thank you for your continued interest. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Here.
Commissioner Holtkamp?
Here.
Commissioner Prinell?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Thank you.
And I'm here, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Ogil.
Present. Do we have a determinate legal notice?
Yeah, a legal notice has been determined on each matter. That is proper.
And do we have a director's report?
I know, unless you've got something, Julia. I've got no report today.
Julia, did you have anything under the director's report?
No, we have nothing additional for today's meeting, but if you have any questions of us, both Brent and myself are here and available to answer.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to matters from the public. The Planning Commission welcomes participation in commission meetings. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the commission that are not on the posted agenda and items which have not already been considered by the commission. No action will be taken. In order to minimize the risk of exposure during this emergency, the public may participate digitally in meetings by sending comments to pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org or orally via tele-comment in lieu of personal attendance. All public comment will be made immediately available to the commissioners, staff, and general public as they are received and processed by staff and can be viewed as attachments to this meeting agenda at So we'll take a three-minute break to see if any public-- you haven't received any public comments yet, have you?
We have not received any yet at this time, but we'll take that little break and see what we have coming back out a bit. Comments during that time, and the three minutes has just concluded. So we have received no comments for public expression.
Okay, thank you. I think we're waiting for Diana. Is Scott on today?
Yes, I think he was having a little bit of technical difficulties, so I imagine he's just getting reconnected.
Do we have-- is he there?
I'm here. Do you see me?
No.
Okay, there we go. We've got Scott back, too, so we can go ahead and proceed with the agenda.
Okay, there are no-- there are no items on the consistent calendar, so we'll go on to the regular calendar. And we have a couple of items that shouldn't take too long, so I'm going to go ahead and change the agenda a little bit, and we'll start with Item 6, Beeson-Boy. The owner being David Tullini, the applicant Javier Raul requests for a minor subdivision of 6.76 acre lot into a 2-acre lot and a 4.5-acre lot. So we'll go ahead with that, and do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Good morning. So as you mentioned, this is a minor subdivision of a 6.76-acre parcel being divided into two new parcels. This is located about four and a half miles north of Ukiah. It's on the south side of Parducci Road and is accessed by Tullini Lane. The parcel is within the Millview Water District but uses onsite septic system for the two existing residences that are already on the parcel. The parcel already also has a few accessory structures as well as a vineyard and an orchard. With regards to referral agencies, only the Department of Transportation and Environmental Health had comments, and those have been included in the conditions of approval. With regard to the key issues, the project was found to be consistent with both the general plan and the zoning district requirements. The project is also consistent with the Division of Land Regulations, and an initial study was conducted for the project, and a negative declaration is recommended. Just to quickly touch on, there were two exceptions. One of the exceptions that was requested was for the cul-de-sac. The applicant requested that the cul-de-sac does not meet standard cul-de-sac hammerhead end of the driveway regulations. And I apologize because Diana, or Commissioner Wedeman, we discussed the other these yesterday, and I misspoke on one of the exceptions, which is actually an exception to the road width, not the actual easement. So the road width for the first 300 feet will be 11 feet in width, and then it will be expanding to 22 feet in width, which is the required standard by DOT. So the exception is 11-foot road width for 300 feet at the beginning of the driveway. And before I make my recommendation, I do have two edits that are minor. On the staff report, Page 3, under the section Environmental Protection, Section 4, second sentence starts with "some aspect could have significant impacts." That is meant to read "no aspect could have significant impacts." And then on Page 24 of the initial study, for the determination, the first option should have been the checked-off box as opposed to the second option. So the first option reads, "I find that the proposed project could not have a significant effect on the environment, and a negative declaration will be prepared." So with that, I conclude my presentation and recommend approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vandy. Do we have any comments? One of the-- probably the easiest to go through each one of the commissioners. We'll start with Greg. Any comments or questions, Greg?
No, no comments, no questions.
Thank you. Diana?
Hi. I should be unmuted now. After talking with Vandy about the access, I think the only different thing on this project is the access to the site as far as the 11-foot driveway coming in and then DOT not requiring a hammerhead turnaround or cul-de-sac. And it appears that they met-- you know, the neighbors are fine to include an easement on their property as described in the staff report. And Vandy sent me a larger site plan, so I understood the egress and ingress into the property. Other than that, I have no problem with this.
Thank you, Diana. Scott? Allison, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Marilyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Marilyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Randy, I just, I don't see myself on the screen, and I'm not sure I was on, but anyway. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Madeline, did you have any questions or comments?
No.
So I have a couple. And this may have to go to Matt. It has-- or to County Council, sorry. It has to do with the resolution. Page 1 of the resolution. I think I kind of commented on this at our last meeting, but I was wondering if under the third whereas paragraph, if it could read "whereas" in accordance with applicable provisions of law, the Planning Commission held a-- I'd like to add the word "virtual" public meeting. Is that possible, Matt?
Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, I'm not sure it's necessary, given that under the Brown Act and the governor's modifications or suspensions to that, that we're told to recognize that all commissions and boards are doing the best they can to handle public comment. So for this meeting in particular, the Planning Commission even noticed it as taking in tele-comment and updated its notice for these two items to specify that people can call in for tele-comment and provide everything but oral comment to the commission. So if it's desired to add the word "virtual," that's fine. I don't think that it's necessary.
Okay, thank you. Any-- how do any of the other commissioners feel? If you're happy with the way it is without virtual, just raise your hand. Okay, it looks like two of us would like virtual and five of us would not, so we'll go with leaving it the way it is. Then I had on Page-- whoops, not Page. On Exhibit A, the second page, Item 11, under Biological Resources. I'm not sure about the date on that. In the middle of the paragraph, it has the-- "current fee shall be made payable to the Mendocino County Clerk and submitted to the Department of Planning and Billing prior to February 12, 2018."
Thank you, Chair Ogil. You are correct. So that date should actually be corrected to be May, and in this instance, it's going to be May 26, 2020.
And the fee should also be corrected to say $2,404.75.
That's okay. We have it covered with the "or current fee." So that's-- we don't need to make that change. But on 11, so the date that is-- let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the sixth line down. It currently reads February 12, 2018. That's going to be revised to read May 26, 2020.
Thank you. And then, again, under the conditions, I just wanted to clarify Condition 26 and 27 in view of the possible changes. Are those two conditions still okay? That has to do with a 40-foot radius turnaround and a 50-foot radius easement, and then the cul-de-sac. Is that still okay?
These conditions would be just fine. The Department of Transportation would be providing us a letter that would state whether or not the conditions have been satisfied. And so with the exception, if you are to grant the exception, then they would be really basing it upon the exception that's been granted and stating that it was satisfied to their standards with that exception.
And that would apply to Condition 24 as well because the road width is standard 26, but that's one of the exceptions as well.
Okay, thank you. That's-- those are all the questions I had. Do we have the applicant here or the applicant or the agent for any comments?
It does not appear that we have an applicant or an agent on the line here. And yeah, it does not look like we have any sort of applicant statement for this item.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to open the public hearing. And under the public hearing, this is a point where we address any telecomments that have been submitted, that have submitted their form and are waiting on the line. The clerk will read the list in order and call the next speaker. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. Do we have any comments so far?
We do not have any requests for tele-comment that were received for this item, and we have not received--
We received one.
We have only received one written correspondence related to this item, which I believe has been distributed and posted to the website. But we could-- we would need to take again the three-to-five-minute pause to allow folks to submit comments to the PBS Commission's line.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll take a five-minute break.
Chair Ogil, that is five minutes. So we are-- we have received no comments to our PBS Commission's email, so therefore we have no public comment on this item. But I do want to note, we do now have the agent for the project on the line. I see Javier Raul is on the line, so I'm wondering if the commission would be willing to allow him to provide his statement at this point since we've just gotten him on the line.
Yes, that would be fine. Oh, yes, we're getting some thumbs up. So yes, let's go ahead with the agent. Javier Raul, please.
Javier, do we have you on the phone? Yeah, Javier, you might need to unmute yourself. We see you, but we can't hear you, Javier.
Javier, are you there?
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes people need to be told how to unmute themselves if they haven't used this thing.
Yeah, so if you're on a smartphone, Javier, there's the mute button at the bottom, but if you're calling in, I believe you need to do star six in order to unmute yourself. Okay, and so since we're not hearing Javier, then I don't want to delay the item, so why don't we go ahead on with your commission discussion?
Thank you. Then at this point, having no comments, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, questions, or comments from commission members? Yes, Diana?
Yes. Staff said there was a response posted on-- I guess on our email website. I didn't see that. Can you just read that post?
Yes, Vandy, would you go ahead and read that comment letter?
Sure. So this letter is from Louis Vigil, who is a resident of 3631 Aldo Lane, so a neighboring-- a neighbor. And the letter is, "The property herein identified as APN 169-071-- And the letter is, "The property herein identified as APN 169-071-29 is stated to be located at 355 Tolini Lane, when the property is off the Aldo Lane Road, south of Parduti Road. Ingress and egress of Aldo Lane Road consists of a single lane approximately 11 feet in width, where APN 169-071-29 and the rest of the residents utilize to access their properties. The Aldo Lane Road is not intended for two-way traffic or high volume. In view of proposal, it indicates the proposed subdivision does not entail any development, only to create legal parcels for the existing residents. Currently, a portion of Proposed Parcel 2 is a walnut orchard, which the residents find pleasing and peaceful. The orchard is located north and west along Subject Parcel 2 and west of Aldo Lane, while three out of the four, well, while three out of two residences are located east of Aldo Lane, with the front views looking out to the orchard. To further protect the visual landscape and potential development, we ask consideration for restrictions be incorporated to eliminate the following possibilities of development to Proposed Parcel 2. One, no development of accessory structures, including accessory dwelling units. Two, no development of hoop houses whatsoever. Three, no development or establishment of livestock or farm, animal ranch, or related accessory structures. And four, no construction of enclosed fencing obstructing view. Please consider restrictions of development related to Proposed Parcel 2. Thank you for allowing the opportunity to submit comments and wait to hear outcome of the decision."
Thank you. I guess the question is, could any of those items that were requested be included in the conditions?
They technically could. Staff did not recommend that they would, though, because that would, that would almost essentially forbid any additional use of the applicant's property. But it's up to the Commission to determine if that's something they would like to include.
And, and this is Julia Ackers-Crogg, Chief Planner. Really, there would need to be established a nexus in terms of requiring this condition to be added between the project and those concerns expressed. And also thinking about proportionality as to what impact and whether or not the requested conditions are proportional. And I do just want to know on a matter of business, too, that just if we could close the public hearing, if we are done with that, too, I think we have not yet done so.
I believe I close the public hearing, Diana.
Okay, good. Sorry, I missed it. So thank you.
Yes, Madeline?
I wondered if staff could outline what specifically development rights, in other words, how many ADUs and that sort of stuff could be theoretically built on this property? Or the two lots, as proposed?
Currently, with the county code standards, with the two existing residences on the proposed parcels, they would each be able to develop one additional accessory dwelling unit, as well as a junior accessory dwelling unit. Furthermore, they could do really as many other accessory structures as they would like in terms of sheds, garage, workshop. If they do go into farms, then they could do accessory structures related to agriculture. It is a rural residential zone parcel, which does kind of have a mix of residential and agricultural uses. So there is other development that could occur, but it is like-
Yeah, roadway standards that everyone's agreed to for the two existing residences?
So the roadway would constitute a local road because it has, it serves more than, it technically can serve more than four parcels. So the corridor preservation would be required whenever any development would occur in the future. And for rural residential one, or for a local road, it's 25 feet from the local, the center line of that local road. So no development would be able to occur within 25 feet of that driveway.
I was meaning more, I was actually meaning, the concern is that 11-foot exception, which I think everybody is agreeing to, because there's only two existing residences. If those ADUs were developed, would we revisit that road width?
No, you would not. This is Julia Ackers-Crogg. That roadway width would not be revisited in terms of this. Also, to remember that these are accessory uses. So primarily, when you look at the standard about corridor preservation setback, we look at the number of parcels served, not the number of residences. So that's important to keep in mind, that really, we base the standards upon the number of parcels served, not the number of residences that may exist on those parcels.
Great, go ahead.
So I don't see a nexus for the, the other requests for restricting buildings. And I think that would be taking away from this property owner's rights. I do, I would be interested in hearing the opinion of staff about the fact that this is not a roadway just for the parcels in, in consideration, that other people are using it. And I'm wondering if there's a, a road association document?
There is no road association document. And currently, I believe only the subject parcels use it, use the driveway for access. However, the way our code is written, any parcel that abuts this driveway, that could, in the future, if they wanted to take access, is considered as a parcel that is, has the potential to be accessed by the driveway. So that's why it's considered the local road and has that determination. However, as I just said, the, only the two residences utilize the driveway at present.
Thank you.
Yes, Diana, you had another comment or question?
Yeah, on the road coming in, is there a, basically, a, like a turnout, like, so if there's a fire truck coming in on that 11-foot road? And Vandy, can you tell me again, and the other commissioners, how long is that 11-foot area of the driveway in? And, and is there any kind of place that a car can pull over? So another, let's say, you know, truck can come in if it's a fire truck or something? A turnout, I guess I'm asking.
The 300, so the, the 11-foot road width would occur for the first 300 feet of the, of the driveway. And there are no turnouts, but there are several driveways that a person could pull into. But this is not a through road, so the only vehicles that really would be using this driveway are the two residents, the people living in the two residences.
And I think it's very important to note, and this is specified in the findings as well, that both the Mendocino County Department of Transportation and Ukiah Valley Fire Protection District have looked at this proposal and are in agreement with any exceptions being granted, and that's clear in the resolution as well.
Okay. Thank you.
But does that include any future development, I guess would be the question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? You were cut off.
Residences, if there's six, then what?
So again, these standards are really based upon the number of parcels served, not the number of residences that may be developed on those parcels. So we really look at parcels rather than residential units in terms of determining corridor setbacks and the road standards.
Another driveway street.
Madeline and Diana, you're, you're still on and you're not muted, just to let you know, unless you have any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, see, and I guess we'll go on to, I need for, oh, sorry, Greg, are you back on?
Yeah, are we, are we at the Commission level? Can you hear me?
Yes, we are.
So I'm ready to come up for the question.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's the district. I move that we adopt this resolution, MS 2016-007, David Tolini Resolution, that's presented before us, whereas the applicant, Javier Rao, filed the application for a minor subdivision with the Mendocino County Department of Planning and Building Services to subdivide a 6.76 acre lot into a two-acre lot and a 4.5-acre lot, 4.5 miles north of Ukiah Center, on south side of the Parduti Road, CR 224, 520 feet west of its intersection with Tolini Lane, CR 228, located at 3550 Tolini Lane, Ukiah, APN 169-071-29, General Plan RR, zoning RR1, Supervisor District 5. Do you really want me to read the whole rest of it?
You do not have to read the rest of that at all. I was going to say, we put the recommendation actually at the bottom of page three on your staff report. And I do want to note that there was the one revision that needs to be made to Condition 11, related to the date change.
Thank you.
I believe there's also a change in the fish and wildlife fee.
That's actually, we have it covered in there, because it reads the, the fee amount or current fee. So we're actually covered. We don't need to make a change on the, the fee amount, but we do want to change the date on that.
Okay, thank you.
So Julia, what else do you need from me on the motion, making the motion for approval?
The only additional thing would just be noting the, the date change as specified at the meeting here to Condition 11.
Okay, I know, as noted.
I'll second.
That was, that was a second by Madeline Hope Camp.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll have a vote, please.
Commissioner Hope Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacob Zun?
I have a conflict of interest in this. I won't be voting.
So that was an abstention.
From who? Jacob Zun?
Did, did you hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Chair Ogil?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Motion carries with an abstention from Commissioner Jacob Zun.
And if I may, just with the permission of the Chair here, I do just want to make a statement for the general public. And I understand there's some confusion about the reordering of the agenda. So just to be clear for the public, that we started with Item 6B. Next, we will go to Item 6C. And then we will come back and finish our meeting with Item 6A. So if you were interested in Item 6A, that is still coming on the agenda, and your opportunity for telecomment will be forthcoming. So please stay tuned if you are waiting to provide comment on that item. And with that, I think we're ready to go to our next one.
Thank you, Julia. So we move on to Item 6C, Case U 2020-0001. The applicant being Peter Silvestri. He requests a use permit for the use of an existing single-family residence as a vacation home rental, 2.7 miles southeast of Fort Bragg. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, and we should have Mark Kleiser on the line. Mark, when you are ready, please go ahead and proceed with your presentation. And, and Mark, we can't yet hear you, so you may need to unmute by doing a star six. And that does not appear to be working. So if you wouldn't mind, if we could just take about a five-minute pause here, just to allow us to make sure we got Mark on the line here for doing his presentation.
Thank you. I think we'll just all stay in our places. It looks like Director Schultz just left to maybe clear that up. So we'll just take whatever it takes to get Mark on the line.
Thank you. We'll just be a couple minutes here. all popping back up, so we now have Mark Kleiser here in our office, and he's going to go ahead and proceed with his presentation.
Okay, hey, good morning, Chair, Commissioner Mark Kleiser, planner for this project. As indicated, the-
Are you unmuted?
Yeah, we're good. Okay, go. As indicated, the applicant is requesting a major use permit to allow for a short-term rental of an existing family residence. No expansion of structures or new development is being proposed. For use, for use, all uses of the project will be in existing structures. The project is located on the south side of Highway 20, near the end of Switham Bank Lane, which is a private road approximately 750 feet in length, takes access off of Highway 20. This three-way intersection of Switham Bank Lane and Highway 20 is approximately 2.3 miles east of Highway 1. To gain access to the subject property, anyone traveling to and from it will pass three separate parcels. Switham Bank Lane is maintained via an informal road association compromise of property owners eager to access their property. The parcel is approximately two acres, with a general plan zoning designation of rural residential, two-acre minimum. The proposed project is an allowed use within the rural residential zoning. However, because the property lacks frontage on a publicly maintained road, the applicant is required to obtain a use permit in order to conduct room and board activities. If operated in accordance with the recommended conditions of approval, the project is found to be consistent with the zoning district and general plan. Improvements to the parcel include a single-family home, a deck, a hot tub, a pump house, and a 2,500-gallon water storage tank. The parcel is served by domestic well and crematic septic. The subject property is densely forced, excuse me, with clearings where the home and the pertinent structures are situated, and the parcel is located approximately 530 feet from Covington Gulch, a stream, and Jackson State Demonstration Forest. Because the proposed project would allow non-residents to inhabit the, I'm sorry, the proposed project would allow non-residents to inhabit the residence for short-term staff address potential nuisances such as guest capacity, noise, and a ban on special events, a number of conditions have been included to reduce these potential nuisances. The project is categorically exempt under CEQA Class 1 for existing facilities. I'd like to point out some housekeeping items here. In the resolution on page 35 of the hearing packet, the first whereas, the fourth line, starting at 1.5 miles up to 2.7 miles, that line should be struck, and the fourth whereas, the second line, that reads that is accurate, sets forth, fourth should be spelled F-O-R-T-H and not F-O-R. And with that, staff recommends approval of the project with conditions. Have you taken any questions?
Thank you, any questions for Mark? Okay, seeing none, then we'll, when I see where the applicant is online, so we'll go to comments or questions from the applicant.
Thank you, I have no questions, just happy to be here, and happy things are moving forward, so thank you, folks.
And thank you for participating in this virtual meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open the public hearing. Do I need to read about the speakers and staff, and how we conduct this?
What we would be doing is similar to the items before, where we will be taking that three-minute pause for people to submit their comments to PBS Commissions, and I'm looking to our clerk, we do not have any telecomment for this item, correct? We do not have any telecomment forms for this item, so with the permission of the commission, we would take a three-minute pause here, come back at 9:53 to determine if we've received any comments.
I see a comment from Diana.
Yes, do you want me to hold when we have discussions, because I do have some comments on this, and maybe I have a question for the planner, staff planner, if I may, I, it went kind of too fast for me to. Can I ask that, Chair?
Is Mark still available?
Yes, we have him right here.
So Mark, on this application, it talks about, you know, the Switham Bank, you know, Drive, but what I find when I visit this site, and I know this area pretty well, actually, what I find is, there's no name on this from Highway 20, there's no street name, there's nothing, and just the other day, when I went by, I went, ended up going down Switham Banks Drive, gravel road to Switham Banks, private drive, but it doesn't go through, it's stopped by a parcel, and actually, the owner of the parcel at the end of Switham Bank Drive was concerned about this, in that he ended up having me follow him to the next road in, back off on Highway 20, and then down a road unmarked, and we found the location of this application. And I'm just surprised that there's no description of, that there's actually no name at Highway 20, where one would turn off to try to get to this location. I'll just leave it at that, it's a concern, but it's a big flag for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Wedeman, and I do just want to note that we did refer this application to Caltrans, as well as to the Fort Bragg Rural Fire Protection District, which would often make comments about things such as adding a private road name for fire protection purposes or emergency services, and there were no comments received, there was actually no response received from Caltrans, and a no-comment response received from the Fort Bragg Fire Department. So I think your concern is noted, however, I'm not sure if we necessarily have the authority to require that at this time, and I may need to, I would maybe need to defer on that and see if Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski had any comments on that either, if you were looking to add something about having a road name placed for this road.
May I respond?
Hi, yes, I don't know if you wanted to hear it from County Council first, Diana?
Sure, but that's not what I was asking, I was just saying, they're defining it as Switham Bank Road, but it's not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, you're just clarifying about the location of it, and I think, you know, still, regardless, I can understand, maybe that road doesn't travel all the way through right now, it may be, and I would have to look deeper into the file to know if the property owner has rights to access off of Switham Bank Lane, but maybe it's just not improved all the way out to where their parcel is, so that would be something we would have to look into further, but I think that comment is well noted, and we know there is access provided off of Highway 20, and it still does not change the requirement that this major use permit is required, because the code regulations read that you must have, the parcel must have frontage on a publicly maintained road, and this site would still not have frontage.
That's not.
Diana, did you have another comment?
I'll catch them later, I do, but I'll let others have it.
Madeline, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to say that it is the transient occupation of the building, however occasional it may be, that I kind of see where Diana's coming from, that the neighbor shouldn't have to be in charge of helping people find their way, and so I'm sure that when it's the regular occupants, that no signage is needed, perhaps for an occasional vacation rental, some signage is needed, since even a person who is familiar with the site, or the area, had trouble finding it, so just putting that out there.
Madam Chairman, I'm a little confused, are we at the staff level, or are we at the planning commission level?
We are at the, we're at the planning commission level with questions for the applicant, but we came back to the applicant because he was not online, so we came back to that, I'm not sure if that answered your question, right?
I'm here.
We did have the applicant on the line, it was the previous item, we did not have the applicant, but at this point, what you've done is, we've had the applicant, we've gone through staff's presentation, we heard from the applicant, and then there were some questions being posed to staff by the commission members.
Thank you for that clarification. Greg, did you have another question or comment?
No, I just was noting that we haven't heard from the public yet, and I don't think we're at the commission level, so it seems like the, if there's questions for the applicant, that that's where we're at.
If I may, just to close out the item here on the comments from Commissioner Wedeman and Commissioner Holt Camp, I do want to point you to condition of approval 15 in the resolution, which describes that the access driveway off of Switham Bank Lane must be clearly addressed and marked for the purposes of identification for clients and emergency service providers. So there is a condition already placed on this to ensure that there's adequate signage to try to mitigate that issue and that concern related to neighbors having to help folks find a location, so.
And I, Julia, and I have a question for the applicant on that note. Okay, can I, sorry, Chair. Okay, may I, with a question for the applicant?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I will do so. For the applicant, just in light of these questions about access and directions, it occurs to me that on the front page of the staff report, where there's a description of the location, it's not, those aren't necessarily driving directions, those are more just a description of the location. Can you share with us, just for our edification, how you plan to provide those directions, and just make sure that your guests are arriving safely, keeping in mind the privacy of your neighbors?
Absolutely. I am lucky that there are some large indicators when it comes to descriptors off of state Highway 20. Also, I will be providing step-by-step directions, and asking my guests, or potential guests, to use Google Maps when they are driving towards the property, assuming most people will be coming from the Bay Area or out of town, I'm assuming they'll be using navigation to get to the property, especially since it'll be most people's first time. When you do use Google Maps, Google Maps correctly instructs you to turn onto Switham Bank Lane from Highway 20, and it actually takes you directly down and right to the property, where there is proper signage when it comes to the address at the end of the driveway, therefore, not disturbing any of the neighbors on that shared Switham Bank Lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Do I need to read this about the speakers? Julia?
You would just, I'm happy to say for you, that if folks would like to provide comment, they will need to submit their comments to pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org during this next period, and then after that point, we have no telecomment requests received for this item, so if we don't receive any correspondence in the next three minutes, then we will assume we have no public comment for this item. So with that, I think we would come back at about 10:04. a public comment letter for this item, it had been posted with the wrong agenda item, and it should now be available on the planning commission meeting agenda page, and it was just one public comment letter submitted, and otherwise, I do not believe that we have received any other public comment for this item during this three-minute pause.
Would it be possible to, to read the letter, or to at least, I don't know that any of the commissioners, I haven't had a chance to read it, so perhaps you could just review it for us?
Yes, I just have to get to it myself here, so I can read it for you, so just give me a moment here.
I'm gonna have to go print it, it's on my desktop. I deleted it out of there, I didn't put it on to the right keys.
Okay, so, will you go grab that?
I'll go grab it.
Okay. So if you heard that, our Commission Services Supervisor Jim Finan is gonna go grab that, and I'll then be able to read that into the record.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have the comment letter here, this was from a gentleman named Michael Martin, and he, it starts off by just saying the address, 30691 West Highway 20, and then states, hello, my name is Michael Martin, I live at 30779 Switham Bank Lane, I oppose, please, I have children, period, the address and home is not on a county road as law requires, 30691 West Highway 20 should not be permitted to be a vacation rental, county staff should not, could not find it, I needed to escort the staff to the address, sincerely, Michael Martin, and he provides his phone number as well.
Okay, thank you, any questions or comments from staff, and if not, perhaps we could address the applicant?
I think we have no additional comments.
Any comments from commissioners or questions of the applicant?
I'll just make a quick comment in response to the letter of concern from the neighbor. He didn't explicitly state- He didn't explicitly state what his concerns were other than finding access to the property without bothering neighbors. And we've already discussed how that will be handled. And the condition of approval already requires that signage be adequate to get emergency responders and guests and others to the property. And something that I don't recall having seen before, but that I do see in this packet are the exterior noise limit standards. And that certainly seems like that should address any noise or other nuisance-type concerns. So with that, I am comfortable that the conditions of approval will help to maintain peace in the neighborhood.
I think the other concern from the applicant was, he mentioned having small children as concern about the access and perhaps people coming and going too fast. I haven't been out that road, so it perhaps could be a road that you could not go that fast on anyway. But I do see, Diana, you'd like to make a comment or have a question? Unmute Diana. Unmute Diana.
Got it. Okay. I think the issue really becomes transient energy into a residential neighborhood. And when you have major use permits, I actually do not see that under Section 20.196.020, the municipal code, that B and C were met really well. And let me, you know, I just want to say adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and necessary facilities have been or are being provided. I don't know if any of you have gone to that site. Scott, this is in New York Perkins. You know, I'd like to hear from you. But I think it fails on B alone. And number C is also, it becomes a, it might be a nuisance to the neighborhood when you do have children playing and you have people who from out of the area. This is a major use permit. It's, they're not off of a county road. It's a private, kind of what I would call a private po-dump road, meaning half paved, half gravel. And I think it's not an automatic. And that's why it's made a major use permit for this type of what one called room and board or vacation round. Therefore, you know, I have grave concerns of this particular application. Thank you.
If I could jump in, please. Are we in commission discussion at this point, or are we still in public comment? I guess I should clarify. Is the public hearing still?
I believe we're in public comment. Is that correct? Are we still? We opened the public hearing, didn't we? Because we had the comments.
Chair Ogil, I don't believe that you've closed the public hearing at this point and brought it back to the commission.
Correct, because we just received the public comment that I don't think any of us were aware of. So we are in public comment, Scott.
Okay.
Just to clarify there, Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, I think it would be appropriate to close the public hearing now and bring it back to the commission for discussion, because I think all comments have been received.
Thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go on with discussion of commission members. Thank you, Matt.
All right, so I'm not as concerned as Diana about the adequacy of the access, mostly because I think that visitors to the vacation rental would be provided directions through the service they rent through, as opposed to, you know, using the description in the staff report or, you know, something like that. I think it would be the responsibility of a good vacation rental host who wants people to be able to find his unit, to be able to give the directions through the Airbnb or VRBO or whichever other service they end up using. I just think it's possible to provide clear directions for visitors. And, you know, if somebody were to visit the site just using the staff report information, you know, it could be difficult. But I would expect, especially with the conditions required, that access shouldn't be a problem, and visitors should be able to find it adequately. Regarding the concern about children in the neighborhood, if there's a kind of a concern beyond the existence of children in the neighborhood, I might be more swayed by that. But I'd hate for our standard of review for these vacation unit permits on private roads to be, you know, if children live within some radius, you know, then we wouldn't approve it. So, you know, I don't have necessarily that concern, you know, even if it were a public road and a major use permit weren't required. There are plenty of public roads in the county that aren't very well-maintained or very safe either, and may have children along those as well. So I'm not as concerned about the issues raised, particularly the access. I just think that visitors will have knowledge of how to get to the site beyond what we have today. You know, when they book it, they'll get that information from the host. And we do have the ability to revoke or amend permits if they do become a nuisance. So if we do, or if the county does receive concerns about, you know, ongoing issues of people finding the residents and people trespassing on other properties because they can't find it, I think there's recourse there. I'm more willing to, you know, see how it plays out as opposed to be concerned about the issues right now.
Thank you, Scott. Diana, did you have any other comments or questions? You're still on, so I wasn't sure if you still wanted to address this.
What would be the recourse, Scott?
I'll ask staff if there's zoning complaints that they're not following the conditions of their permit. I believe that can be brought back before the commission to revoke it, or code enforcement can be placed on the applicant that their permit could be revoked if they're not meeting the conditions of approval, same as any other use permit. But I'm happy to hear staff give the full correct answer.
If I may.
Also answer whose cost it would be.
Okay, so thank you. If I may, with the permission of the chair, address that comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So if there were to be complaints received about the operation of this vacation home rental, of course, it would go through our code enforcement division. We would take a look at it, verify if conditions were being violated that should be being met. We, of course, would give the applicant the opportunity to correct it before proceeding to any sort of discussion of a revocation or modification hearing. You'll see that revocation is actually included as Condition of Approval 6 on this permit, which states that in 6B, if one or more of the conditions upon which the permit was granted has been violated, is grounds for revocation of the permit. And then we would be scheduling a hearing in front of the Planning Commission for consideration of whether or not you wish to revoke the permit.
Satisfied with that, Diana?
Pardon?
Are you satisfied with that?
I heard the answer. I'm okay with what they said, yes. That answered my question.
Not quite mine, however. At whose cost would that complaint be pursued?
So the, any complaint, that is pursued at the county's cost, that we do our investigation. And then if we determine that there is a violation and we notice the applicant and they choose not to comply, there is the ability, once we go through the proper procedures, to potentially assess fines against the property.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Chair, am I visible? I've had my hand up. I don't know if you can see me. Maybe you can just hear me.
Randy, we can only hear you.
Okay, all right, I'm waving my finger. I've been here the whole time, I guess. I just didn't know I wasn't visible. I think county staff has done a good job with the conditions that they have put forth on this application. The idea of limiting it to four people, the idea of requiring signage, and limiting the noise level that they would allow. In the past, we've had a hard time, I know, with private roads that are not fronting county roads. But I think with the conditions that we've put in here and the length of this road being as close as it is to Highway 20, I'm comfortable with the proposal.
Thank you, Randy. I don't know, is there any opportunity for you to go on a video also? Or are you just audio?
We can, Chair Ogil, I just was notified by our admin staff. We can make his video turn on. So Commissioner Jacobson, with your permission, will turn on your camera.
Well, that would be, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. So our admin staff will work on that.
Okay.
And I just, I wanted really to address the applicant with any comments that he had after hearing this discussion. Mr. Sylvester, do you have any comments? Mr. Sylvester, if you do have comments, I believe, okay, you're on now. Thank you. Do you have any comments, Commissioner Sylvester?
Oh, no, I do not.
Thank you. And Diana, I see your hand up again.
Just one last question. Who monitors the use of, for visitors? Who has the burden of responsibility to monitor that? The neighbors or the county?
The county.
And how do you do that?
Well, we are a complaint-driven county in terms of our code enforcement. So if we did receive a complaint that stated that they had higher occupancy than what was permitted, then we would go out and pursue that and conduct our code investigation.
I have a potential condition that I'd like to discuss with the commission that for other vacation units, what I've seen jurisdictions do is require that any advertisement for the listing, whether it be on websites or whatever, lists certain requirements placed on the permit so that it's clear to guests. What that helps is, I don't know what county's code enforcement protocols are for vacation rentals, but what I've seen before is there be a condition of approval that requires any advertisement, for example, list the maximum occupancy, make note that it's on a private road, less than 1,000 feet from a public road, or, you know, some kind of information like that. That is, that way, when the renter is booking the room, they're aware of the conditions. And it also, in my experience, helps code enforcement sometimes. They can look just at that listing. And if these requirements aren't shown on the advertisement, then it's less likely that they're being followed through on with the rental. So I wonder if there's any history, the other planning commissioners obviously dealt with more of these permits than I have, if we could require the applicant post on any advertisement certain restrictions that this permit has to make sure that renters are aware of them when they book.
Is that a question for staff, I believe? God, are you questioning that for staff?
Well, I was asking the commission if there was any interest in this added condition. But if staff thinks that we can't add it, then certainly I'm interested to hear their reasoning.
Yes, Allison?
I would support the addition of such a condition. I, you know, in home rentals, whether it's VRBO or Airbnb or, you know, some other platform that is assisting in the rental process, there's a certain amount of clear communication between the homeowner that's renting and the person that is coming to stay that's really critical to running the vacation rental in a good way. And when any of that breaks down on either side, it basically results in bad neighbor relations or it results in bad reviews. And neither of those things are good for anybody. And so clear communication upfront, I think, is the best possible scenario to be very clear. People are coming to a rural area on a, you know, a partially gravelled, private road, four people maximum, just being completely upfront about that will not do any harm. It will only do good and help to clarify the situation so that everybody is clear in the long run.
So are you asking for an additional condition to be added to the conditions?
I'm supportive of the proposal Commissioner Perkins made.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson, you have a hand.
Yes, and I'm also very supportive of the Commissioner Perkins's proposal. I think it would make it clear from the start. And it would be, it would definitely help with the rest of the neighbors, I think, too. So everybody understands.
Thank you. And Commissioner Nelson, you have your hand up?
I agree as well. I think it'd also be a good idea to put a speed limit in that communication.
If I could be a little bit more specific, since it sounds like there's some consensus that this condition might get added, I would recommend that the condition require that the limitations of special conditions 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, and 14 all be listed on an advertisement. Those conditions are the maximum occupancy, the prohibition of camping, the prohibition of special events, parking only in the driveway and not on Swithin Bank Lane, no loud noises between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM, and no campfires. Those conditions in particular are the ones that I would recommend requiring the applicant list on any advertisement so that guests can't claim ignorance when they have a campfire or bring an RV or bring 14 people. Then it puts a little bit more responsibility and accountability on both sides that these conditions are met. And if they aren't, then it would be kind of a handshake between the host and the renter that, hey, you know, it says no events, but we understand you're going to have a wedding. That would be a clear violation of the conditions and would help us, I think, revoke a permit or enforce it if there are issues down the line. So those are the specific conditions that I'd recommend any advertisement be required to list.
Thank you, Scott. And I see the applicant. I actually see him online. Do you have any comments to that, Mr. Sylvester? You're muted. Mr. Sylvester, you're muted.
Here we go. Hello?
Oops, yes.
Okay. Yes, I would be happy to share the information with every potential guest. I do not want to disturb the community. I do not want a lot of people at the house. It was designed and is made to work for small groups of two, three, or four people. So I would be happy to promote it as that, because that's truly what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Any comments or questions for the applicant?
I do. Would, Mr. Sylvester, would you be opposed to 10 mile an hour speed limit on the last little section of road to your property?
I would not, no.
I would like to see that included as well.
Should I guess we need to let staff craft that condition?
I will say the road itself, it is relatively hard to exceed 10 or 15 miles an hour comfortably already. So I'd like to think it's kind of a built-in governor, in a sense, on the road as it exists.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, I just, I thought of something, and I'm not sure how you, you know, how you manage this. But what would you do if somebody, if a family had three children?
I will also say, in the description of the house, I am going to mention that it is not suitable for children under a certain age. The home is designed really for couples or two couples to share memories and have a good time. It's not built for children. I would say in the sense of, I'm not offering high chairs and things of that sort.
Well, I guess I'm not concerned with the two-year-olds. I'm concerned with the 14, 13s, and 12-year-olds. And, you know, I think if that is your goal, we'd need to make it clear that the four people includes children.
Okay. Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski.
I'm not sure that's fair also. You know, I don't know, I don't know the area that well, and I don't know the house. But, you know, is it suitable for a family of five or six?
It only sleeps four comfortably. It only sleeps four. There are two beds, no pullout couch, no air mattress, no things of that sort. So it only sleeps four people.
I believe County Counsel wanted to weigh in on this as well.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski with a couple of comments on the conditions that we're talking about. If, you know, having a numerical limit, I think, is reasonable. I don't think we want to get into issues of how many children versus adults. To the extent that's something that the applicant desires to do on their own, that's fine. But I wouldn't put that into a condition. I think I have a slight concern about applying a specific speed limit on this one particular use as opposed to every other person on that roadway in terms of a speed limit. And then I wanted us to kind of confirm that there's a direction from the commission for this added condition that is not specific just to advertising the number of people, which I think is common on Airbnb listings, but also a total of six different conditions that would have to be listed either on the listing itself or in some kind of further agreement with each person. And that that was understood by both the commission and the applicant.
Okay, Scott, I'm not sure if you wanted to address this or not.
I'm in favor of adding that. I don't think it's unreasonable that, or uncommon even, that advertisement lists things like no campfires, no camping, no large events. So I think it's, you know, obviously common that there's a maximum occupancy. But I think it's also common that units have, you know, reasonable restrictions on these other things. So, yeah, I'm in favor of having that listed on the advertisement. I don't need it to be in part of the contract or anything like that. I like it being on the advertisement so everybody can see it. And we can, us planning commissioners can see it, you know, in a month. Hey, look, there's our conditions, they're on the post. So I'm comfortable with that if the rest of the planning commission is.
Madam Chair, this is the Planning Director Brent Schultz, if I could speak to the board, the commission. I just wanted to let the, I just wanted to let the commission know, we get very few calls on vacation rentals a year. Like, in two years, I've had one call, somebody complaining to me about vacation rentals in the county. And I just asked our code enforcement staff, how many calls are they getting a year? They get two to three on an average year, and it's on unpermitted vacation rentals that we either tell them to stop or push them into coming in for a permit. So we get very few calls on them. I know they're a hot topic and that across the state, not just here. So, but I just want to let you know, we don't have a lot of problems with it so far.
So, and for the consideration of the commission, I have drafted up a tentative condition that could be added to reflect the comments from Commissioner Perkins. So this would be tentative condition number 24 that could be added to the resolution. And it would read, "All advertisements for the vacation home rentals shall specify the limitations and conditions of approval eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, and 14."
I think I need to address Commissioner Perkins on that one. Are you comfortable with that, or would you prefer just not having that condition?
I'm comfortable with it. If the commission doesn't think it's important, that's fine, too. Like, I wanted to address Diana's concerns and the concerns of a neighbor and wanted to make sure that it didn't snowball into a different kind of rental unit. And this would be one way to help prevent that. But if it's unnecessary, that's perfectly fine, too.
Okay, I think I just need a, how many of the commissioners would like to see the addition of condition number 24? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. So, yes, staff, I believe we would like to have condition number 24. Does the applicant have any comments on that?
No. Happy to add all those in the advertisements.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Then I think we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, and staff can correct me if I get this wrong, but I feel okay about it. I moved it by resolution, as amended by staff comments during the presentation. The planning commission adopt the categorical exemption in grant major use permit U 2020-0001 for the project based on the approved project description and findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and the addition of special condition 24 as presented by staff.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second? Thank you, Allison. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Chair?
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
And Commissioner Wedeman, you're on mute.
No.
Commissioner Holcam?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Chair Ogil?
Oh, Chair Ogil, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and did we get Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I believe we have a six yes and one no, is that correct?
Yes, it's correct.
Thank you.
The motion passes with Commissioner Wedeman dissenting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate all the time and all the efforts.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question or comment? So your hand go up.
I just need to announce that I have a conflict of interest with the last item on the agenda. So I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. That's item 6A for the applicant being AT&amp;T Mobility. And Diana, you had a comment also?
No.
Staff, I do have a comment. We would like to request, if you wouldn't mind, a 10-minute break just to allow us a chance to shift gears here real quickly. And for the public, if you were intending to provide telecomment, now would be your time to please call in to the telecomment information that you were provided. And otherwise, staff would like to request a 10-minute break right now.
Thank you. Then we'll take a 10-minute break and be back at what time?
At about 10:45.
Thank you.
First, staff, we are back, available and ready whenever you would like to start the item again.
Thank you, Julia. Welcome on with the regular calendar, item 6A, case U 2019-0011. The owner is Betty Nixon, the applicant being AT&amp;T Mobility, and the agent being Epic Wireless LLC. Your request is a ma-, or a major use permit to authorize construction and operation of a wireless communication facility consisting of a 143-foot cell lattice tower with 12 antennae, various appertinent equipment, ground equipment generator, and equipment cabinet. Associated improvements include a gravel and paved access route to the site. To the site, the proposed lattice tower will be located within an 1,800-square-foot fence compound. And I do want to thank all of those who are here for this item. I expected the previous two items to be not near as lengthy as they were. So I appreciate all of you. bearing with us on that. And I believe we're ready for a staff report from the planning department.
Thank you, Chair Ogilvy. And I do just want to let the commissioners know, so you can take the opportunity to look now if you'd like, that there are about six new comment letters that have been submitted during the course of this meeting, which have been posted to the agenda item and are available on the Planning Commission Agenda page. So that's just my small note about some of the public comment received. And then I would like to turn this over to Mark Kleiser, the staff planner.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Chair and commissioners. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to state that the Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits the commission from denying the project on the basis of radio frequency emissions if those emissions are below the standard as determined by the FCC. This project, as proposed, has demonstrated that radio frequency emissions will be below those standards set by the FCC. So the presentation, as indicated, the use permit requests construction and operation of a 143-foot lattice wireless communication facility located approximately five miles southeast of Willets. For reference, from Willet's city center, you would head east on Hill Road for approximately two and a half miles, then south on East Side Road till it turns into Ridgewood Road for approximately two more miles. Parcels to the north, south, and east of the project are generally larger in size, over 20 acres. However, directly west of the project site are a number of smaller parcels which make up for more densely populated community. Access to the site is via a private driveway shared with five other parcels. As such, condition number 34 requires the applicant provide a road assessment prior to development. In addition to the tower, the project proposes various pertinent equipment within a 1,800-square-foot leased area. This includes 12 antenna and a 190-gallon diesel backup generator, which can remain operational for up to seven days during emergencies. First, net emergency service responders will be provided on the proposed tower. I'd like to point out, the staff report states that CAL FIRE did not respond to a request for comments. Staff did reach out to CAL FIRE and comments were received. At this time, only AT&amp;T will be located on the tower, but the project will be built to provide co-location opportunities for up to four carriers. That said, per FCC regulations, anyone regardless of the carrier will be able to access 911 for emergencies. This project is part of the Federal Connect America Fund, which is designed to ensure the consumers in rural areas have access to modern communication networks. Staff did request clarification for both 5G and microwaves on this tower, and it was warned that neither are being proposed at this time. The subject parcel is classified as remote residential with a zoning designation of upland residential. The proposed project is in conformance with development standards for both the general plan and zoning district and is an allowed use with the granting of a major use permit. On August 4, 2015, the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors adopted guidelines for the development of wireless communication facilities. The proposed project is in conformance with all guidelines. The applicant did consider eight alternative sites, however, due to restrictive CCNRs, those sites were ultimately abandoned. The proposed parcel was chosen in part due to the location being the least intrusive while still filling a coverage gap in that area. A negative declaration was prepared for the project. I'd like to point out some housekeeping notes. The memo sent to the planning commission regarding the required road assessment condition stated that that would be condition number 27. That should read condition number 34. I'd like to also point out, I needed correction on page seven of exhibit A. The condition number 32 incorrectly states the use permit granted will expire on February 20. That date should read May 21. And finally, staff recommends approval with conditions. That's my staff support. Take any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Why don't we go through questions? I'll just call each one of you individually. And if you have questions or comments, you can give them to staff. We'll start with Madeline, please.
I thought we voted to continue this until we could have live meetings at our last meeting. So I'm not sure why we're even hearing this today.
Sure, I can field that comment. So we had discussed that the commission at the April 16 meeting had requested that staff look into the ability to be able to have sites where the public could participate or at minimum be providing telecomment as an option. We now are providing telecomment as an option. And with the continued shelter-in-place orders and the health orders, we are not able to provide a physical location, much less we cannot continue this item to unspecified date, given that there is the Permit Streamlining Act as well as shot clock requirements that must be adhered to for any sort of wireless communication facility. And if this item were to be continued beyond June 17, it may result in a deemed approved permit. So we understood the desire of the commission. However, we are unable to comply with providing an in-person meeting given the current COVID-19 situation.
Commissioner Holcamp, does that answer your question, or did you have any additional comments or questions to staff?
Well, sort of not. I guess I'm okay with it. I think we could provide public access, and I can think of ways to do it, but I'll just thought, no.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Jacobson?
I have no comment at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Wedeman?
I just need the correction repeated so I could write it on my on the agenda on the proposal, exhibit A.
There was a memo sent out to the planning commission regarding the required road assessment, and that was incorrectly stated that that would be condition number 27. That should read condition number 34. And then there was a date on the exhibit A, condition number 32 incorrectly stated that the use permit granted would expire on February 20. That date should read May 21.
If I may ask, then, does that renumber the items after item 26? It was, I guess I'm a little confused on that. Did you mention item, condition number 27, or that should be 34? I'm sorry. Could you clarify that for me, Mark, please?
Condition number 27 will remain the same. Condition number 34 will be the required road assessment.
So there was just a slight confusion in the memorandum that staff had prepared for the item. We were requesting to add an additional condition to exhibit A, and we had incorrectly stated in the memo that that would be condition of approval number 27, when in reality that new condition will be condition of approval number 34. So really, the changes to the resolution are modifying the date in condition 32 to reflect the date of May 21, 2030, and then adding condition of approval 34 as described in the memorandum from staff dated May 21, 2020.
Thank you. Commissioner Wedeman, does that answer your question? Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. It's pretty brief. In the negative declaration under the Public Services heading, it talks about the very high fire hazard severity rating and the referral to CAL FIRE. And CAL FIRE stated that the applicant's required to maintain address and driveway standards and requires the applicant maintain defensible space and fuel modification standards. Short of there being an issue and a fire starting and finding out after the fact that that wasn't maintained, is there any way, are you aware that CAL FIRE would inspect this kind of thing? If the county would inspect this, how we can ensure that this condition is carried out? What's kind of the background on that?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Perkins, Julia Ackers-Crogg, chief planner. And with any sort of building permit where you require CAL FIRE preliminary clearance, before you're able to get a final inspection on that building permit, you have to obtain a clearance letter from California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, in order to demonstrate that you have satisfied all of their requirements. So that would be captured prior to the final inspection on the tower.
And after the final inspection of the tower is constructed, from that point on, there'd be no real way to monitor that that's continually enforced or continually satisfied, that requirement?
That's correct. I mean, of course, if we received a complaint and staff were to look into it and determine that if there's some, they're not meeting these standards anymore, there may be an opportunity there to request correction of it, as well as, you know, anytime a tower comes in for a modification or renewal, then we also look at the compliance with the conditions of approval and could potentially require that improvements be made if they are necessary.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have for questions.
Commissioner Purnell?
Okay, I did have a couple of questions for staff. And one is just to clarify that the so-called shot clock expires June 17. Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct, and that actually includes a 90-day extension from when it should have expired. So that is June 17 would be the critical day that action must be taken before that day.
Okay. And then has the Governor's Brown Act modification for COVID-19 given any additional flexibility to that date in any way?
Not to my understanding. I would like to defer that to Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, no, the governor's orders, to my knowledge, haven't suspended anything regarding the Permit Streamlining Act. The shot clock is a federal issue, so the governor's orders couldn't do that. The Brown Act's suspensions are merely to enable the continuance of government meetings under different kinds of circumstances, which we've been complying with here by virtue of providing telecomment.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then I think I know the answer to this, but just to clarify, continuing the item, let's say we were to hear the item today but ultimately not vote vote to continue it, that would still have us if that would not reset the shot clock, correct? Like, it would continue and expire on June 17, correct?
My understanding is that, yes, it would still continue and expire on June 17. And, yeah, so a continuance would not necessarily satisfy the requirement to take action within the specified time period.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Now, there's been, as I think most of the commissioners have read in the many, many, many letters that poured in, a lot of concern over 5G. And I did hear staff say that they confirm that there is no 5G currently proposed for this tower, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then if 5G wanted to be added at a later date, should it be determined that that was feasible for Mendocino County? Would that be allowed by right without coming back to the commission or the board?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Purnell. And I actually think I would want to hear a little bit from the applicant about what type of improvements are required to initiate 5G on a tower before I could actually answer that question fully, because it depends if they would be adding just little antennas, things like that that met the standard 6409 eligible facilities request, then those would be going as administrative permits. Whereas if they required something more or may require additional ground equipment, something like that, it may trigger the need for a use permit modification. So it's hard for me to answer that right now without knowing what improvements would be necessary to make this tower 5G.
Okay, great. We will save those questions for the applicant. And then I think that this is still a staff question. Are there currently any 5G installations in Mendocino County?
Thank you for that question. And we can only speak to the unincorporated areas. I cannot speak to the incorporated city limits. But I am not aware, staff is not aware of any towers within the county right now that operate 5G capacities. I would have to, honestly, it would be looking through every single file to absolutely confirm that. But we are not aware, I have never seen, and I'm looking to my other staff member here, Mark Kleiser, we are not aware of any towers that are 5G at this time. And I think it may be helpful that we hear from the applicant about what 5G is and what that type of improvements are necessary for that to maybe have a better understanding of how 5G works in general.
Sure, sure. Okay, one final question for staff at this point, and it is from condition of approval number one on aesthetics, which references faux branches. Should that be struck, or are faux branches proposed as part of this project?
Mark Kleiser, project planner, that should be struck.
Thank you, Mark. That's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Purnell. I have a couple of items for staff. On the staff report, page five. Candidate H. Yes. I believe in reading that, the third line down that begins with, "The property is located on the south side of Ridgewood Road." Candidate G, Golden Host. I think that should be candidate H.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Sorry, I've got a bunch of yellow stickers here I'm trying to get through. Okay, on exhibit A of the conditions of approval, the first paragraph, well, the second paragraph, approved description. And that begins with, well, the fourth line down, "Included gravel and paved access route to," I think "the" should be in there, "to the site."
Sorry, what page is that again?
Yes, that makes sense. It's on page three of the resolution in the exhibit A, and it's just under the approved project description saying "to the site."
Thank you. And then I had a question on, whoops, lost my yellow tag, on page seven of the conditions. And this is really, I was comparing the conditions of the other two items that came before us under item 30, was it? Yeah, 30 on page seven, there's an A, B, C. And then on the other two, there was an item D, as in dog. "A final judgment of a court of competent jurisdiction has declared one or more conditions to be voided and effective and has enjoined or otherwise prohibited the enforcement or operation of one or more such conditions." Both of those were listed in the other conditions of approval, but not in this one. So I wondered if that should be included or not.
You are correct, Chair Ogilvy. That was an oversight by staff. So there should be added to that, condition 30 would be added, item D, as read by Chair Ogilvy.
Thank you. And then the next line down says, "Any revocation shall proceed as specified in Title 20 of the Mendocino County Code." And it was just kind of hanging out there. I didn't know if that was supposed to be a part of that condition 30 or not.
Usually it is just sort of a hanging line below the statement of the standard condition, just specifying that it proceeds in accordance with the requirements in county code. So there's no change needed for that item.
Okay, thank you. And the last one I had is on page 21 of the negative declaration. I could very well be wrong on this. I'm not sure that should, the checkmark should be in the first item. "I find that the proposed project could not have a significant effect." I wasn't really sure if that should be the second one. "I find that although the proposed item could have a significant effect on the environment." Could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. So this is a negative declaration, meaning that while there may still be conditions of approval on the project, under SEQA, none of the impacts identified were deemed significant and required mitigation to make them less than significant. So the first checkbox being checked is actually the correct statement, because it's stating that we determined that while there may be some categories under SEQA that had some level of impact, that all those impacts are less than impacts are less than significant, and therefore no mitigation is required to make them less than significant.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Those are the only questions I had before we go on to the applicant. Does the commissioners have any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, then we will go on with the applicant. And please identify yourself. This, yeah, okay. Yes, please identify yourself when you come online. Thank you. I'm not sure who is speaking first. We have Nick, Jared, and Donna. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, commissioners and chair, for having us here today. My name is Jared Kersley with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T, the applicant. I believe there's a specific question at this point regarding to 5G. I defer to Nick Taggus to assist with that answer, if that's the what's on the table at this time.
Yes, go ahead, Nick.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners and chair. My name is Nick Taggus with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. The direct question about 5G was asked about this tower specifically, or towers in general in in the county of Mendocino. Just a quick primer about 5G. It stands for fifth generation of technology. And the way that 5G technology works is it's a very, very small five-millimeter wavelength of light. It's a very small wavelength. And because of that, they can only travel very, very short distances in order to work effectively. 4G technology is a much longer light wave. That's why it can travel longer distances. And so in more rural areas of California, as well as the United States, 4G technology will still be the preferred method to provide LTE data and coverage to folks. 5G technology is is specifically targeted for high-dense urban areas, as well as dense core areas of commercial, or areas where there's a hospital, for instance, to be able to transmit that data back back and forth. That's tech, that's currently how the technology is being used and is foreseen to be used in the near term future.
Thanks, Ian. So I guess that begs the question, and I think you've answered it, but I'm going to reiterate that, because I know a lot of the comments we receive from the public were very concerned about the 5G. So does that mean that in our area of Mendocino County, probably there would not be a 5G use? Is that correct?
Well, again, I can only explain how the technology works. We don't know in ten years, two years, five years, if the technology evolves. But what we what we do know is regardless, all of these technologies have to meet FCC federal standards and guidelines, or health emission standards. They are not allowed to be turned on and on air unless they meet these federal standards and guidelines. So in this case, what we know is this specific tower that's that's being proposed is a 4G technology tower. And again, you know, I go back to what is 5G and how does it work? Think of it as the remote control in your house, or your television, or your VCR, DVR. Some of your remote controls, if you, for instance, put it behind your couch, and you press some buttons, it it does not work. It can't see the box that you're pointing at. Consider that as a as a 5G style of technology. 4G is where you have a remote, it could be under the blanket, it could be behind the couch, and if you're pushing a button, it still works. That's because that longer light wave is what is allowing the data to pass through that blocked area.
That's an excellent scenario. So I guess my next question would be, if it is a shorter light area, as far as radio frequency emissions, would be more or lesser the same?
Well, again, it would be any standard of FCC would have to beat those thresholds. And in this case, we have real-time live data coming in from Chicago, Los Angeles, New York, Sacramento. And and what we're seeing is 5G technology, as it's being deployed, is many thousands times lower than the current standard for the FCC guidelines.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go on with presentations from applicant.
Yeah, Jared Kersley here again with Epic Wireless with AT&amp;T. Just to give a synopsis of the estimated coverage for this project, you're looking at a roughly five and a half square miles of LTE coverage, which will cover upwards of 400, 450 parcels. Again, that's LTE coverage. This is a CAF II Connect America Fund project as well, providing high-speed broadband internet to homes. That the the area is covered with, again, 400 so parcels, depending on terrain, foliage, tall foliage, you know, that number could change because of technologies that it, it's a little different than the LTE technology. It more more or less requires a line of sight to people's dwellings with the vantage point to an antenna on the house, or or tree, or whatnot, whatever vantage point they have available to see the tower. That's what will be providing the high-speed broadband internet. This currently is a complete dead zone for AT&amp;T. When I found the property, I had Verizon and AT&amp;T phone on me, and both carriers had no signal around the property. When you're about two miles out of the the area, you have service, and then it cuts out for the final mile, the two miles. So it is a complete dead zone. It's a very important coverage gap that AT&amp;T is attempting to fill here, in addition to providing the high-speed internet services. And this will also be a FirstNet project, as Mark explained. And additional information is available during this presentation about the FirstNet technology and how it could benefit not only the community, but first responders mainly. So I would like to defer back to Nick Taggus on behalf of the FirstNet.
Thank you, Jared. Again, commissioners and chair, this is Nick Taggus with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. So if this commission today would would be approving this project, what are you approving? Jared mentioned the LTE coverage gap in this area that is a complete dead zone, as well as the high-speed broadband internet to underserved folks in the community that do not have reliable, fast, high-speed internet. And very importantly, is the FirstNet program. So currently, as it stands, our firefighters, police, sheriffs, departments, they cannot communicate together on a one-channel platform to speak to each other. Currently, across the United States and in California and our counties, it's incredible that in 2020, they have to rely on two-way radios, walkie-talkies. Right now, any of us on this on this meeting, we can take a phone, I can snap a picture of it, I can send it to you, I can post it on Facebook if we're friends, or we could start a meeting. That does not work currently. And our police and fire and sheriffs don't have that in 2020. So what is FirstNet? FirstNet is the ability for all of our first responders to have a dedicated channel on this network to be able to communicate in real time. What we have seen over the last decade is inter-jurisdictional crimes increasing. Criminals don't care about borders or property lines between counties and cities. But our first responders, the only way to communicate right now is through the two-way radios. This FirstNet program will allow sheriffs and and city police to have a dedicated network to speak to each other, to instantly snap a photo of either an active crime scene, or or an active suspect, and immediately broadcast that to everyone on their phone. And currently, they don't have that opportunity. But with FirstNet, they will. You know, a good example of that in my rural county that I live in, in Placer County, just in 2014, there was an incident in Sacramento where a carjacking turned into a police shooting, which then ended up going into two other counties and ended up in a home invasion. And unfortunately, a couple officers lost their lives that day. And they had no way to speak to each other in real time between the cities and the counties that were having this police chase. With this type of technology, this FirstNet, once it's up and running, the county and the cities are able to sign up their first responders, and they'll be in real time, be able to communicate with each other in the event of an inter-jurisdictional crime, or if there's a fire or other natural disaster, when the network itself is being overburdened by users, their dedicated channel will not be degraded, and they'll still be able to communicate with each other effectively. That is what you would be approving today with this FirstNet and LTE, as well as the CAF II project, if you were to approve this tower. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else from the applicant? Jared or Donna, did you have any other comments or?
Yeah, please, I'd like to invite Donna Davis, if possible.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Donna Davis. I'm AT&amp;T External Affairs. Really happy to be here this morning to talk about the opportunity to expand wireless and internet coverage here in this part of Mendocino County. You know, I've been involved in many meetings with sheriffs in North Coast. And, you know, one of the top items that comes up repeatedly is the issue of lack of coverage or adequate coverage for our first responders, our public safety agencies. And I think now, more than ever with COVID-19, we've seen, I keep using the word unprecedented, because every year, it seems like something unprecedented happened. You know, we had the wildfires. And last year, we had PSPS events where PG&E shut down power to millions of residents of California for days at a time. And now with COVID-19, we've seen, you know, our folks have to work from home if they can, students have to do distance learning. And I'm sure you've seen the conversations statewide about that digital divide. So this CAF II opportunity really helps us to bring more robust internet service to Mendocino County, our students, our residents, our businesses. And then especially with COVID-19, you know, we talk about the FirstNet network that Nick mentioned. And I've seen it in some really unique applications this year. I was involved with helping with the quarantine site at Travis Air Force Base, when they had to bring in the cruise ship folks that that were stuck out at sea right at the beginning of COVID-19. And we had federal agencies all responding to support that quarantine event at Travis, including Homeland Security, CDC, our US Marshals. And they were able to take advantage of the FirstNet network with those devices. As Nick mentioned, they were able to connect using that dedicated bandwidth, and weren't being bogged down in their communications back to their national headquarters. So we've received a lot of really positive feedback from our public safety agencies with respect to, you know, how that FirstNet really comes to play. We've seen it in Tulare County. They had to set up a makeshift hospital there, and with FirstNet devices and FirstNet deployables that are dedicated to support those services, they were able to provide wireless coverage in an area that didn't have wireless coverage through deployed mobile units. So the thing to consider is, and Nick mentioned, we have responding agencies in these emergencies that unfortunately are becoming the norm for us. And the FirstNet dedicated service is really providing tremendous support to those agencies as they work through these really difficult and challenging times. So really appreciate your time, and wanted to recognize the staff for all the work that they've done to help us put together this application that's before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a question. I'm not sure which one of the three of you could address it. This FirstNet sounds wonderful, but I'm curious what the cost to the the agencies that would be involved with FirstNet, what the costs would be, and maybe it's not a blanket cost, there's maybe a lot of determining factors. But I was just curious if you could provide some kind of an idea what the cost would be.
Sure. And that's a great question. And you're correct, Commissioner Ogle, that it does depend on the level of services. But for the individual user, it's actually a very, very low rate, monthly rate for their use. I don't know what it is per agency off the top of my head, but it is actually very, very competitive as far as signing up those individual first responders. And that's police, that's fire, in some cases, hospital, you know, or medical, which is also frontline, right? So doctors and nurses are all able to access the FirstNet.
I'm going to hear Donna and help answer Chair's question here. So right now, let's let's take out the the conversation of FirstNet. Right now, each of your separate county police, fire, sheriff, they sign up on their own plans to their own carriers right now. And those costs are are between their their offices and those carriers. That's that's why there's such a patchwork, and that's why they cannot communicate with each other effectively. In this case here, these plans are highly competitive. And if you go on the website, thefirstnet.com, built with AT&amp;T, you have smartphone plans as low as forty-four nine, forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents a month. And that's unlimited talk, text, data, mobile hotspots, tethering, and being able to communicate to each other like we spoke about. So they're extremely competitive rates. And in a lot of cases, they're lower than the current average rate for a personal user to sign up on a full data plan with any of the carriers.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that, Nick. I'll go on with the commissioners to see if there are any questions for the applicant. If you could just raise your hand, and then I will address you, please. Yes, Allison?
Okay. I have a fundamental question about the the primary project objective. It's described in the staff report as filling the Valley Oaks coverage gap. Is that a reference to the Valley Oaks Mobile Home Park?
Mark Kleiser, project planner? No, that is not. That is just the name given to the project by the applicant.
Okay, no relation to the Valley Oaks Mobile Home Park?
No.
Commissioner, if I may, real quick, so when these carriers issue us search rings in geographical areas, they're not certain where the actual candidate will be located. They just provide us a geographical area. And those those search rings or geographical areas are given an initial name. And a lot of times, we just keep that name as the project itself.
Okay. And then those 450 parcels that stand the benefit from the proposed project, those are primarily in the Pine Mountain subdivision, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It's mentioned in the staff report, and I heard a correction from our staff planner on this, that that there is no shared private drive. But I but I did hear Mark correct it, that that the driveway, when Manzanita Drive ends, it goes into a private drive that serves, I think by his count, it was five different, different properties. And then as that turns right and continues up to the proposed project site, I just wanted to note that that's still a shared private drive. It's about point one seven five miles of shared shared driveway there. So I think that's more of a statement, but I did want to go ahead and give an opportunity to the applicants to respond to the issue of the shared private drive and those impacts.
So Jared Kersley with Epic Wireless, as the public road ends on Manzanita Drive becomes a shared private road, that road is shared, as Mark explains. And then the road, the access road veers off to the right to two different parcels. Both parcels are owned by the Nixon family. And the access road that is used to get to the the actual site is not shared, it's only used by Nixon property. It dead ends at the Nixon property.
Okay. And there there's a portion of that, though, where I believe there's deeded easement to the neighboring property, and that's how they've been accessing their property for many decades. So I did just want to point that out. Let's see, let me see if I have any other. So has any analysis been done on the Pine Mountain community water system and the underground water mains that serve the subdivision, and how that might be affected by especially road improvements related to the proposed project?
I can take that one. So Julia Akrokrog, chief planner, anytime before you start a construction project, you have to call and have the utility companies come out and mark all the lines to ensure that you do not hit any of those lines. Our report, we didn't necessarily address the water system specifically, because this project, they would not be able to conflict with any easements or existing development that's already in place in those areas. So I hope So I hope that answers the question. I mean, the water system, if there's lines running through this area, they would have to avoid them, and they would be clearly marked. And there's actually a requirement that you have utility companies come out and mark where their infrastructure is, so you do not hit it.
Okay, I think that partially addresses it. I did have several residents contact me, and I have not been able to verify this myself, but I have been told by multiple residents in the Pine Mountain subdivision that one of the water mains for the subdivision that's part of the community water system does run through the project area, or at least through the access to the project area, and that there is concern that the community water system will be impacted. And I just didn't see any mention of that or that process. And I think that you addressed that, Julia.
Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Purnell. I'll go back to the Commissioners again. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, then we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And I will address this again. This is a point where we will address any telecomments first that have been submitted, that have submitted their form and are waiting on the line. The clerk will read the list in order and go on with the next speaker. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Speakers are asked to address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. And I did want to notify those who are coming in on the telecomment. You will be notified after two minutes that you have one minute left. One other thing I would like to reiterate, as Mark previously said, because there were many comments and communications about the Telecommunications Act of 1996, Section 704, 7B, 4, I believe it is, that I may not be correct on that, prohibits denial on the basis of radio frequency emissions if those emissions are below the standards as determined by the Federal Communications Commission. Therefore, the Commissioners will not be able to address any of those items. So if that is something you had planned to address, that is something we cannot, we cannot address. So with that, I think, Julia, you would be the one to open with the telecomment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Ogil. And I do just want to note, so the first caller is going to be Linda Cardena Gabrielson, and I apologize if I have mispronounced any portion of that name. And I do just that there is a slight drop that happens in the call when you get moved over to be a participant. So just to be mindful that you are not being dropped off the line. It just, there's a little shift that happens. So with that, I think we will go to Linda Cardena Gabrielson.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners, my name is Linda Cardona Gabrielson. My home on Manzanita Drive is 1,500 feet from the proposed communication facility site. I believe that this permit should be denied and its negative declaration rejected. This project has rocked my neighborhood. The permit application does not accurately represent the proposed site and surroundings. The facility will be within 1,500 feet of multiple residences of two to seven acres, not 20. This is the most densely populated area close to any tower of this size in the county. My currently unobstructed view of a ridge line of pines will be permanently blighted by this tower. Available but not noted in the staff report, where CAL fires permit requirements, the county road turnaround at the dead end of Manzanita Drive has a tighter-than-required 40-foot circumference. There is significant fire danger from the tower, as Commissioner Perkins mentioned. And I'm concerned about who will be responsible for ensuring the 100-foot defensible space around the facility and maintaining the overall condition of the vegetation after installation. Is general liability insurance part of the county's licensing lease agreement with the owner and AT&amp;T Mobility Epic Wireless? Waterford's guidelines do not include increased values in radio, microwave, or electromagnetic frequencies when the projected additional 24 antennas and microwave dish are added. What's the timeline for expanding this particular tower? Chris Baker at FirstNet told me communication needs to be linked for FirstNet to work, preferably through microwave repeaters for emergency communication to occur. Will this tower need additional equipment to operate Band 14, the dedicated channel? What will be the oversight on this facility's future strength of power and ultimate size? Once a tower is installed, the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012 permits its increase in height and power output with no public process. AT&amp;T historically does not apply limits or test facilities after installation.
And caller, you have one minute remaining.
The facility is not the least intrusive means of remedying a gap in broadband service on Pine Mountain. Satellite and Wi-Fi boosters will work effectively on my street. Fiber optics are a safer alternative. The staff report noted a less intrusive alternative site, candidate H, which covers more land units. Please apply Mendocino County's precautionary principles policy mandate to make choices for communication facility placement based on the least harmful alternatives and assess alternatives using the best available science. Please hear your constituents' concerns and provide a comprehensive DIR. Thank you for your service and thoughtful consideration of this issue.
Thank you. And I'm not sure, and Julia, maybe you could help me out with this. When the comments are given and there are questions, can we process those questions now through the applicant?
I think, I think if there's questions out of the public comments for the applicants, I would save those for after we've heard all the public comment. If you have questions for the speakers, the public commenters, then I would say do those while you have the caller on the line.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, AT&amp;T and Nick, Jared, and Donna, you've captured the questions that that person has. Any of the Commissioners have a question for the applicant?
For the caller.
For the caller, thank you. Seeing none, then we will go on with our next telecommenter.
Thank you, Chair Ogil. So the next caller that we will be adding in is Kathy Ortiz. And just a reminder again that, Ms. Ortiz, I will announce when you have one minute remaining, and your time will begin now.
All right. Thank you very much. This is Kathy Ortiz, and my husband and I live right next to this proposed well, you know, this proposed site here at 20200 Manzanita Drive. We want to weigh in about this proposed tower, because it'll be affecting us, our home, our lives, everything. I hope that you'll read our previous letters on page one and pages 126 of the public comments. Because of our previous comments and concerns, the public, the planning and building department has just recently amended the application to make sure the private road that we share with the Nixons will be maintained to its original condition. We appreciate that. We own two lots, and the only road to our properties is on this private road. Our easement could be overburdened by the potential truck damage and the construction of this tower and future impacts from the commercial use of this road. The water line coming to us and two other pieces of property do, it runs right underneath that road, and it's not very deep, so it will be affected. Let me tell you, it breaks all the time there. Pine Mountain Estate CCNRs ensures that there will be no commercial enterprises or businesses allowed in this area. That is one of the reasons we moved here, and yet the road leading to the proposed site is in the Pine Mountain subdivision. We are not against broadband. We use ViaSat satellite and very happy with the service they provide. It's plenty of speed. We can watch videos. We also use a cell phone booster, so we get service in our home. We're just what we are. We're against the location of this large tower. I think we understand that most towers of this size are in much bigger lots and properties away from so many residents. There's, it's just a very populated area here. This large tower will be
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, this large tower will be continually a visual insult on us because of our, because of our elevation and view out our window. It will always be it, and everywhere we go on our property, and for several other neighbors, too. My big concern is I understand that the FCC does not monitor towers of this less than 200-foot in height. And who is going to regulate the towers after being constructed in Mendocino County? Will the Mendocino County be responsible for making sure these towers are compliant?
Caller, your time is up.
Okay, and who will be liable? Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. We'll go on with the next telecommenter.
Okay, excellent. Was, I see Commissioner Weedman.
Are you, are you writing down the questions? Julia?
Yes, our staff is writing down some of these questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next speaker would be Cynthia Riser-Jevons. And we'll just wait a second here while she gets brought into the meeting here. And there we now have Cynthia Riser-Jevons on the line. So caller, you have three minutes, and I will announce when you have one minute remaining. Please begin now, and you are on mute at the moment. Cynthia, please proceed with your comments. Cynthia Riser-Jevon? Caller, Cynthia, it appears that you have background noise running, and your three minutes is beginning now. So Cynthia, you need to mute the meeting that you have running in the background, because we can hear the stream running.
Thank you so much. I'm on mute. It says I'm not.
Now you may go ahead.
Thank you. As of this morning, I counted 130 posted public comments about this issue. Nineteen of the comments were in favor of the project. Yes? Yes? Can you? Okay, can you turn the sound off on that? Okay, I have to turn off some background noise. Just a minute. Sorry, we have two screens going here. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Cynthia.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead and now.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. As of this morning, there were 130 public comments posted about this issue. There were 19 comments in favor of the project and 111 public letters against the project.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
And an additional 167 signatures.
Yes, we can hear you. Your time begins now.
Against the cell tower. The local people do not want this dangerous project in this location. The locals were not consulted, and they do not want it. Because they have learned how dangerous microwave and radio frequency waves are. The FCC has chosen to neglect to study the health effects of waves and radio frequency waves for the past 25 years, which is outrageous. They've chosen not to study these health effects, so they can leave a way that they don't know of any negative health effects. They studied the heat from these units 25 and 30 years ago, and they're using those limits to tell you now that these things are safe. And it's completely untrue. There are thousands of scientists and scientific studies around the world who have come out with their information that radio waves and microwaves from these cell towers are extremely dangerous to our health. They are dangerous to the environment, the insects, the animals, and human cellular functions. There's neurological damage, depression, insomnia, mis
You have one minute remaining.
And cancer, all caused by electromagnetic and microwave pollution. And they are trying to silence us by saying that we're not allowed to complain about these things. These are our lives. Those of us who live in this death are put at great harm from a cell tower like this. And we object. We're defending our lives against AT&amp;T, and I am an AT&amp;T customer. Neighboring families are all at severe risk and invisible pollution. A number of these homes are at the same height as the actual radio frequency wave emitters, and so their homes are in direct line of sight of these emitters. And
Time is up. And caller, thank you. Okay, so that was, so for the benefit of the public, just when you are providing telecomment, please mute any background noise that you have. That would include if you're watching the feed on YouTube. Otherwise, we hear it coming back through your microphone, and it's very confusing. There is a delay between the meeting that we are holding and the live stream that is on the computer. So you need to be conscious of that. Were there any questions from the Commission for this caller, or shall we move to the next caller?
I had one question, and it was, what was the numbers at the very beginning of her call? Microphone, and it's very confusing. There is a delay between the meeting that we are holding and the live stream that is on the computer. So you need to be conscious of that.
Okay, I have a continuation.
Were there any questions from the Commission for this caller?
So again, for the public, Cynthia, I need you to mute the YouTube feed that you have going, because when you turn back on the line, we can only hear the meeting discussion that's already been had. So Cynthia, we will unmute you to respond to Commissioner Weedman's question, but please do mute your YouTube sound in the background before we do so. And now if I can have our staff, please unmute Cynthia.
I need you to mute the YouTube feed that you have going, because when you turn back on the line.
So Cynthia, if you've turned off YouTube in the background, if you would be willing to answer Commissioner Weedman's question.
Hi, can you still hear me? I don't see it.
Now we can hear you well. Whatever you have right now, keep that going.
All right, thank you. I was not able to hear the question, and I was not able to finish my comment.
So Cynthia, if you've turned off YouTube in the background, if you would be willing to answer our question.
I hope I have turned off YouTube. I do not see it. I do not see it.
Cynthia, if you would respond, I need you to mute the YouTube feed that you, when you turn back on the line.
I don't see it.
Now we can hear you well. Whatever you have right now, keep that going.
All right. Thank you. I was not able to hear the question and I was not able to finish my comment.
So Cynthia, if you've turned off YouTube in the background, if you would be willing to answer Commissioner Weedeman's question.
I hope I have turned off YouTube. I do not see it.
So I'm, I'm going to try to address Commissioner Weedeman's question. There was about 133 public comment letters posted and I believe there were 15 in favor, approximately, and the remainder were against.
Thank, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to go on with the next telecommenter.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ogil. So the next telecomment is coming from Anna Marie Wyble and she will be joining into the meeting here. Again, for the callers, please mute any background noise that you have. If you have the YouTube stream running, please close it. And then additionally, you have three minutes. I will announce when you have one minute remaining and your time begins now.
I just got disconnected.
No, Anna Marie, we can hear you. Please proceed with your comments.
No, my phone is disconnected.
We can-
Can you hear me even though my phone is disconnected?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I apologize for the confusion. I'm just, I was not able to hear Cynthia's presentation because there were so many background noises. So don't, don't start yet with my minutes. Okay? Thank you. Dear commissioners, I want to point out for you that we also submitted signatures for petitions, 175 against this project and 34 in favor of this project was submitted by another organization group. The newspaper article did not show that it was going to be possible to call in and also the notice of hearing was confusing, different information on page one and three. The agenda changed. I didn't hear it announced this morning. A&amp;T was apparently letting its workers know to send in letters against the project, which I find is a conflict of interest. But as far as this project is concerned, only an EIR that will disclose, analyze, and try to mitigate the cumulative impacts of all these towers, current and future towers that you're aware of, will satisfy the CEQA requirement. And we need to look at the direct impacts of these many environmental issues. There's an incomplete draft, initial study, and attachments, weak conditions of approval and mitigation. So it really needs an EIR. We need to know the long-range plans for this. It's a, we're told that currently it's not going to be 5G. All it needs is software updates. All it needs is RRUs and it can happen tomorrow. So then the setback would have to be different. We cannot discriminate against 5G.
Caller, you have one minute remaining.
Yes. So it's, there should be a balloon test so people can see because the visual is really, really important. On another tower, they put up 50 posts to go to the site. We need to know how many other equipment is going to happen. They already started digging and putting in things without the project being approved. And it is a steep hairpin curve. Who knows that the cars get up there? It's dangerous. The road is narrow with a fire. Fire is a huge issue that I wrote about in both my comments. And it's not the least significant, there's not a significant gap, not least intrusive means. And another, the age, another site would be better.
Three minutes has passed.
Okay. Please do not improve it and you will not be-
So next we have will be, does anyone have any questions for the caller on the line? Seeing none coming from the commissioners, then we will move. We have our, our next telecomment. And now we have, I think, two telecommenters coming across this line. And so we're going to be pulling over Ellen or David Drell. And so Ellen or David, again, you will have three minutes. I'll announce at the one-minute timer. I understand both of you have submitted telecomment responses. So once we finish with one, we'll go on to the next. And please state your name for the record before you begin speaking. And your three minutes for the first speaker begins now.
Next we have, does anyone have any questions for the caller on the line?
David and Ellen, do we have you on the phone?
Our next telecomment. And now we have, I think, two telecommenters coming across this line.
David or Ellen, do we have you on the line?
David Drell. And Ellen.
David or Ellen?
Yes, this is Ellen.
Ellen, you have three minutes. Please begin your comments now.
All right. You've asked me to begin my comments, but it's obviously very difficult because there's a time lag between what I'm saying and what I'm actually hearing in the meeting. So I, first of all, I want to thank Madeline Commissioner Holt Camp very much for her opening statement that this meeting should be held when the public can attend in a more reasonable way. It's clearly very controversial. One commissioner told me that they have never seen on an item before the commission so many comments in all of her time as a member of the commission. So if we have until June 17th, I, I urge the commission to reschedule this so that the public can actually weigh in in a reasonable way. I've, I've been listening. And, and also to have, you know, we were led to believe that this portion of the meeting would begin at nine o'clock and it wasn't until nearly two hours later that it started, which adds to the stress and the tension. But I would also like to say that the opening gambit from staff was to bar, to lead the commissioners to believe that they could not deal in any way, shape, or form with the health and environmental impacts of these towers, which is, which is obviously a primary concern of the people who live there, whether people want to admit it or speak it, say the words or not. Actually, I don't know where Mr. Kleiser gets that interpretation of the telecommunications act. Yes, the act says that a project, construction, sighting, or modification cannot be done based on environmental effects if, if the tower is operating within the FCC regulations. That doesn't bar the commission from looking at any number of potential health and environmental effects of, of radio frequency. In fact, in my interpretation, it, it actually puts a burden on the commission to make sure that those emissions don't exceed certain levels. So, but you're being told by staff to dismiss that entire area of discussion.
Caller, you have one minute remaining.
So I don't think the planning commission can, one, make the finding that there are no environmental impacts because the staff has only given you materials that look with inside the chain link fence, which is absurd. And two, I don't think, I, I think that this telecommunications act does certainly not wipe away the commission and local government's responsibility to protect the health and safety of its citizens. That's still the primary purpose of local government. And it's, and the telecommunications act does not wipe that away. So again, I want to thank Commissioner Holt Camp for, for attempting to allow the public to, to participate in this debate in a little more reasonable way. And if, if the technology can be set up for staff and the applicant to interact with the commission in a reasonable way, as we have seen for the last two and a half hours, certainly the technology can be made available for citizens to also act in a reasonable way.
Your time is up. And now I note that we had Ellen, was David wishing to provide comments?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Excellent. So David, your, your time will begin now. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is David Drell. I've submitted lots of material to the, to the commission members and I hope they have read them. I think what, what, there's a big glaring hole in the staff's presentation to the commission and that is the staff has only provided conditions for approval. But really what the, what the staff, if the staff wasn't trying to drive this process, they would have provided substantial evidence for disapproval that the telecommunications acts, act allows bodies like the planning commission to use as a basis for denial. How can you, so they have not, the staff has not provided you with, with the proper information and, and evidence for denial. And denial is, is an option. It's, it's an option for you as planning commissioners in Mendocino County in order to protect the health and welfare of the citizens. And number two, denial is allowed, is allowed under the corrupt telecommunications act, which was pushed through under the Clinton administration 25 years ago. But clearly, and why did they ban local government from using the, the radio frequency emissions and the impact on the environment? Why did they ban you from using that as a, as a reason for denial? They didn't ban you from hearing about it. They just said you can't use that as a reason for denial. But there, there are other possible reasons for denial that staff should have provided you as the basis for denial. And the reason AT&amp;T and its, and its partners in this process-
Caller, you have one minute remaining.
Yeah. Pushed through that section of the, of the telecommunications act is that they, there were serious problems and they were, and they wanted to deny the public and the, and , and commissions and boards like you that are supposed to represent the interest of the public from using the clear and present danger of radio frequency emissions on health and on, on the biosphere so that they could continue their business, which, which is, as we all know, is a trillion-dollar business. But those things will be changing as the body of scientific evidence, and I'm a scientist myself, as the body of scientific evidence in the last 20 years has increased, there's no question in the scientific community at this point that these facilities are dangerous and, 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 and you have every reason to deny this process.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
So to the Chair Ogil, that concludes our telecomment speakers that we had. Now we have received a couple additional pieces of public correspondence during the course of this meeting for this item. And then I do also want to note that we, as staff, would want to take the similar break like we have in previous items for about three minutes to allow the public, if they have not already done so, to submit any additional comments to the PBS commissions@mendocinocounty.org email address. And with that, so staff would be looking to, to come back at about 12:06, about three minutes from now.
Before you leave, did you want to go on with those additional comments that have come in or after the break?
Sure, I could go ahead and just note what we have so far. I, I just have two comments that actually appear to be from the same individual or at least the same email account. So one was a direct question and just says, has there been any physical work done on this site yet? I have heard that a cable has already been laid. If so, if this, so, if so, why? And then the secondary comment was, oh, and I apologize, I'm reading them in the reverse order. So that was the, the later comments. The first one was stating that firstly, this process of a public meeting is woefully inadequate for this issue. It seems that the commissioners are not educated on the issue. We are being schooled by the industry itself here, in parentheses, biased. This area is not a dead zone. We have service now. Secondly, 2G, 3G, 4G all have harmful non-ionizing radiation that is harmful and cumulative. It is also wrong to say that the public comments are all about 5G. There is a lot more to this issue. To go forward is negligent and non-inclusive. Also, the FCC guidelines are not adequate and they are currently being challenged in court by Robert Kennedy Jr. and the Children's Defense Fund. Please address these comments and all of the over 100 public comments. Please address the health issues that will be caused by this tower. Thank you, Rain Youngstrom. And so then with that, I think we would want to take a three-minute pause and then come back and see if we've received anything additional.
So we'll return at 12:08.
Perfect. Thank you. So Julia Ackert Crog, Chief Planner, we did receive one additional comment from the same individual who had commented that I had read right before we took the break. So this was from also Rain Youngstrom, and this was, the comment letter says, "I was also wondering if each of the commissioners have read the public written comments? If you do not know the numbers pro/ con, it shows that they have not been looked at. Why, again, have you read the comments?" Question mark. And we received no other additional comments.
Okay, thank you. In general, I would like to make a comment. I am not sure about the other commissioners, but this project has been going on, and the public has been aware of it for over two months. And personally, I feel getting comments at the last minute, getting emails that have many, many pages to read, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I do not appreciate that information coming in at that late a time, and we're expected to stay up and all hours of the night to try to read and digest this information that, in my opinion, should have been presented at least a month ago and been a part of our packet when it came in. That's my comment. I'm not sure if any other commissioners wish to comment on that or not.
And just a matter of point of order, I would just like to note for Chair Ogil that the public hearing is still open at this time. So if you would like to bring it back to the commission, you could certainly close the public hearing if you so desired.
If we have no other comments from the public, then we will close the public hearing. And we will bring it back for discussion of commission members.
Marilyn, I'm once again having trouble hearing you.
Is anyone else
Maybe just move closer to your microphone or something.
Is anyone else having trouble hearing me?
I think we can hear you better now. You just need to speak up a little bit so we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we start with Commissioner Jacobson? Do you have any comments or questions?
Commissioner Jacobson, you're on mute at the time. There we go.
Okay, no, I do not.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wedeman?
No, are we going to, the questions that were asked by the first few speakers from the public, are we going to get those questions answered by AT&amp;T?
Yes, and I thought we would go through with the commissioners in case they had any other questions that would be added on to those that the commenters asked. So we'll go on with Commissioner Holcamp.
Well, to one of the commenters, I would like to say that I agree about getting things at the last minute, but I personally read every single one of the comments that were posted by nine o'clock this morning. So that's one thing. And for another, I would just like to say that I have a lot of trouble with the people who are supposed to be served by this not wanting it. I don't get where the necessity is of it. I didn't even see any letters of support from public service agencies, so that's my comment.
I could address the board, Brent Schultz, Planning Director. The sheriff sent a letter of support for this tower and expanding his first net ability and a concern for reaching the public in a disaster. As you know, we have fires and other disasters, and we can't reach people there. And we also have a letter of support from, I believe, Little Lake Fire District, which also was supportive of this tower. So we have had Public Safety, at least those two, saying they're supportive of it.
I also believe there was a petition of about 34 people had signed a petition in favor of it, if I am not mistaken. And I realize there was also a petition of numerous people from the public who were against it that was greater than the 34 that were in favor of it, but just to add that comment. Commissioner Perkins, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't right now, no, thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, there you are. Commissioner Purnell?
Hi there. Yeah, so I'm one of those commissioners that did my darndest to read all of the 130-plus letters, at least the ones that came in up until about 10 o'clock last night. I also conducted a site visit to the proposed project area and spent a lot of time on the phone with third district residents, concerned residents, talking to me. So I would just caution the public to not lash out at the commissioners or make assumptions about what we have or haven't done. I think we're all aware that this is an extremely controversial issue, certainly one of the more controversial issues that I've seen in my tenure here on the commission, and that is noted, that carries weight. And there were many important issues brought up in the public comments that we have addressed and will continue to address in this hearing. I do have one additional question for either staff or the applicants, and that has to do with the height of the tower, which we know is 143 feet, in comparison to the height of the trees. My guesstimate is that the trees around there are approximately 80 feet tall, and that's from my firsthand visit to the site. And as I look at some of the visuals that were presented to us in the staff report, I also see that it appears that the trees are well below the height of the proposed tower, which is to say the proposed tower will stick up well above the trees. And as such, will have not only a very significant visual impact to much of the Pine Mountain neighborhood, but will quite literally be right outside at the same height of many a living room in Pine Mountain Estates. But I would like to address those numbers with respect to the height of the trees and the height of the tower.
The staff would want to defer to the applicant on the height of the trees surrounding it, looking, it does not appear that it's noted on some of the elevations that were provided within the packet that's been distributed for this item. So just to not give incorrect information, would want the applicant to respond.
Jared Kirsley here with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. Thank you for the question. So the elevation at the base of the tower is precisely 2,154 feet, and the, I'm going to have to run these calculations in real time, so please bear with me here. I got the survey up in front of me, and the survey captured the tall trees around the area. And also keep in mind that the height of the tower is also driven by the network requirements to get people adequate service for high-speed internet purposes. But let me answer your question in just a minute here. And it is worth noting that when we take heights of the trees, the actual height of the tree is, I don't want to use the word irrelevant, but it kind of is, it has to be compared to the overall elevation of the tower. So for instance, I took a tree that measured out at the top of elevation at 2,254 feet. When you subtract that by the 2,154 feet, you have a 120-foot tall tree that's being compared directly to the tower. So what with you, what you have there is about 20, 23 feet above that tree line that you'll see the tower. And of course, trees will grow that we have to take into consideration when planning a wireless facility of this nature. That was, of course, just one tree that I pulled a calculation of. 2241, let's see here. So the other trees would stand right around 100 feet tall compared to the tower, and about 95. So you got between 95 and 120 feet tall trees compared to the tower elevation. I hope that makes sense, and while I'm trying to compare to the elevation of the antennas.
Yes, thank you. So I think it's safe to say from those numbers that we've got the towers sticking up above the trees anywhere between, you know, 20 and close to 50 feet, which is, it appears that the proportions on this northeast elevation and attachment and show approximately that as well. So
Yeah. And the trees directly to the north would be right around the, because elevation increases as you go to the north, it would be right around the 100 to 120-foot area.
Okay, thank you for those numbers.
Yeah.
Mr. Purnell, were that, was that it for your questions? Okay, I
Oops, Marilyn, you are on mute.
Sorry, Commissioner Jacobson, go ahead. I'm sorry, I think I overlooked you. It's hard to look at the screen and make sure I caught everyone.
Okay, no, I probably should, I was remiss, I probably should have said, I did visit the site. I've worked in the area before. And Jared, I was going to comment, but you came up with the same numbers I did. Generally, second growth Douglas fir and pine is anywhere from 90 to 130 feet tall. I'm not sure what happens when the trees get taller than the cell tower at some point, but I guess that's something that I'm sure you've worked with before. But what I was up there for was I was trying to see if I could find the area from the public, from, I guess you'd say, from the public roads in the area, and what kind of visual impact that I would see from these roads. And I found it very difficult to actually see where this tower was going to be located from a vantage point while I was up there. If we're talking about anywhere from 25 to 50 foot above the trees, this tower, and once it's, I guess, as you could say, decorated with faux branches, I don't believe it's going to be a significant impact to the visual quality of the subdivision.
And Steph, I would just like to make one correction, and I think we addressed this at the beginning, just to make sure the commission is clear on that, that this is a proposed lattice tower. This is not for a faux tree. So there was that need to strike the language in condition one about referring to faux branches. So this would be a lattice tower. It would not be a monopine, which is something that you typically see in our more coastal areas.
Okay, so the, I did hear you mention faux branches, but I didn't catch it. The faux branches were going to be struck from the, struck from the record?
That's correct, because it is a lattice tower, so there would be no faux branches associated with it.
I know there are numerous questions from the public, or numerous comments that we were hoping that AT&amp;T and the other applicants could address, and I believe you have written most of those down, so perhaps we could go over those now?
Yeah, if I can. Jared Kirsley again with Epic Wireless. I believe the first question had to do with candidate H, Golden Ghost. Candidate H was the initial search area that we looked at. That's what the RF engineers, in that upper area of that community, I would say, is higher grounds. Obviously, higher grounds is a little better coverage. Unfortunately, after we delved into the site and the qualities and variables, it was not a viable site. You had a couple mile long private road, shared, really rough dirt road, and it wasn't going to be viable for real estate rights reasons. We would really have to get legal access via all the road users because we're encroaching on their property. In this case, that's not the case because it's, the whole entire road is on the Nixon property. So there's no encroachment on anyone else's property. So after we, like I said, after we looked into that candidate further, as we normally do, we had to disqualify it for real estate right purposes. So then we had to shift the ring southwest towards where all the public roads are, near public roads, and that could still fulfill the coverage goals for this area. So that's how we came up with the Nixon property. And actually, we were more interested in the Nixon property with the dwelling on it. It has higher ground, as said before, had a nice old tennis court that was not used, is abandoned, that it was a flat ground, looked great. And then we, the next step, the next investment that AT&amp;T has to do is they pull the tire report. Well, after pulling the tire report for the Nixon property with the dwelling, we found the CCNRs, restrictive CCNRs, that would not allow anything else besides basically a single unit dwelling. So I had a phone conversation with Ms. Nixon, let her know that, sorry, we can't do the project on your property. She enlightened me that said, you know, my other property to the south was built before, basically, foreign, before the CCNRs were there, so that did not have the restrictions. So we went back out to the property and surveyed it, and the RF engineer agreed that the location that we found was suitable for coverage. And actually, it's going to be a less intrusive site as the initial Nixon property because that one was higher grounds. We are surrounded by foliage. Yeah, some vantage points, you might see a portion of the tower, but we did provide photo simulations to show a good depiction of what this tower would encompass for the community. And at most vantage points, the tower is either not visible or slightly visible. The property to the north, I believe it's the Ortiz property, they lie about 2,200 feet, which is about four tenths of a mile to the north. And I believe that this tower, where it's located on the south, lower elevation towards the south of the Nixon property, it's not going to be intrusive at that distance, at 2,200 feet, almost a half a mile, it's not going to be intrusive to their visual viewpoints. And I believe that that's where the water line got brought up. As staff has said, they always dial 811, get utility located, and apparently that water line's been broken in the past few times. This, the building of the cell tower will not be any more or less impactful than someone putting in a swimming pool or building a home up in that area. So we always abide by utilities, can't interfere with utilities, and if they do happen to break a line or damage it, they will obviously have to be repaired by AT&amp;T. But they will take mitigated measures to ensure that that water line will not be disturbed. I think there is a question of why the location, I feel like I already went over that aspect of it, when going down with the candidate from H down to the Nixon property and how we ended up there. Monitoring EME, you know, right now, the EME report that we provided to the staff indicates 0.1236% of the FCC exposure limits. We're extremely low. Main reason for that is the tower is 143 feet in the air, and the behavior of RF when it comes off of the tower is more or less straight out. It doesn't point downward. So when you're at the ground level at the adjacent homes, the exposure limit is far below the FCC requirements. Every time, every time the tower will be modified, AT&amp;T will be obligated to provide an updated EME report to show that the tower is still in compliance. I'm not sure, I hope that answers that question. I'm not sure, I hope that answers that question. Property values were brought up. You know, property value impacts is a perceived effect based on health concerns. And as we know, we can't take health concerns per EME thresholds into consideration. That's where property values, the impacts of property values are believed to be impacted. There's been numerous studies out there. One of the recent ones looked at sixteen hundred different homes within an eighth mile, a quarter mile, and a half mile to wireless facilities, and after a six-month review on property values in those close proximities to towers, there isn't any evidence that they impacted the property values. And actually, the demand for wires, infrastructure such as this tower will be providing is demanded by a lot of users. If it's not demand, if it's, the lack of demand will come from folks concerned about safety from the tower. And, you know, we did read a hundred and thirty-plus public comments. We do take it seriously. We noticed a lot of them were repeated, maybe from the same family, same folks. So we did read through, however, it was mentioned earlier that there's a petition and support for over thirty residents in the community. In addition to that, there were at least a dozen, two dozen of comments that had to do with safety, fire safety, first responder, and just needing the coverage in the area. So it's hard to decipher through all the letters, but I think it's safe to say that ninety ninety to ninety-five percent of the letters had to do with safety concerns relating to EME concerns, which is the driving factor of the opposition. And the road got brought up, the access road got brought up. I, one of the comments, of course, we will be obligated to build the road per CAL FIRE standards and maintain the road for CAL FIRE standards as it's said in the conditions of approval by CAL FIRE. That's all I have right now. If there's any other questions that maybe I missed, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. I think we could defer to staff now. Julia, I believe you mentioned that you were writing down the questions. Had they all been covered by Jared, or were there additional comments or questions that need to be addressed by the applicant?
I think largely the questions for the applicant were covered. You know, some of the questions that were posed during the meeting, I think, were more about the adequacy of some of the evaluation that was done by staff and the staff reports and the initial study, and less so questions for the applicant. So I do believe Jared has addressed the questions that were asked. And Mark, go ahead.
Mark Kleiser, there was one question regarding CAL FIRE conditions, and those were addressed in the conditions number fifteen. And CAL FIRE did submit the conditions for this project regarding turnouts.
I know there were new, well, at least a couple of comments about quite a hairpin type turn. I assume those approvals or requirements from CAL FIRE that has been addressed, is that correct, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other comments from the applicant? Any of you?
I would be happy to defer to Nick or Donna if they have anything added. I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll bring it back to the commission. Any other questions, comments, discussions about where we go from here? Madeline, you're not on mute. I don't know if you had any comments or not. Okay, none. Diana?
I'm just looking at the staff report on page fourteen, fifteen and fourteen, bottom of page thirteen and fourteen, when it talks about land use and planning. And it basically says, if we look at the top of page fourteen, B, conflict with applicable land use plan policy or regulation of agency. And we have no impact. And to the planner, I have to say, I didn't hear it that way. I didn't read it that way for the last month or two. I didn't hear it that way for the last month or two. And what I'm going to say is, when I look at the our general plan, and if you look at like planning principles, and I go to on planning principles to two, three A, encourage and empower local communities and organizations to engage in local planning and community improvements consistent with the general plan's goals and policies. Then I go beyond that, because I am representing the community of the fifth district and other districts, the county. Then I go to under our goal with planning principles from our general plan, provide county residents with opportunities to actively participate in the planning decisions that affect their lives. And the beauty of this, it's been very difficult, but very hard for all players. The beauty of it is our community got proactive. Whether you agree or not, they got proactive, and they're talking about, especially the people in that neighborhood. When we look at the numbers of, from, you know, one hundred and thirty-three plus, there's a lot more than one hundred and thirty-three. And we look at, most of them were against it, and fifteen were, or twenty were for it. And then it went throughout, then it got on live activity on the list serve, and it went viral throughout the fifth and fourth district. So obviously, this issue brought for me, what I want to say is, I want to listen to the community. I want to say, two meetings ago, we approved a cell tower in the Queen Arena, Wallala area, and there was no negative response from the community. It made sense. It served. And when we have such a negative response from the community and our general plan, the basic, one of the basic principles is we want the community to be active. We want to hear from them. We want to understand if our planning principles are meeting their needs and their livelihoods. I just think we need to take note, and I'll leave it at that for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, did you have some comments?
I did, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Wedeman for her comments as well. And to the community, you guys have done a phenomenal job of having your voice be heard on this, even despite our lack of, you know, in-person gatherings. And your voices have been heard. And to Commissioner Wedeman's point, since I've been on the commission, there's been, you know, maybe a handful of cell tower proposals. And the majority of them have been in more remote areas, forest land, remote ridge tops. And there's a difference between those proposals and those locations than there is from this one, which is truly located in the middle of a neighborhood. And it's located in the middle of a neighborhood that has CCNRs that prohibit this exact thing. And over the last decades, residents have located in this neighborhood because of its remoteness, because it's farther away from services, and because it has those CCNR restrictions in place to protect the area where they want to live. And so it's important to keep that in mind, that this site is literally located just over the line, just barely over the line from a neighborhood. It's accessed through that neighborhood. It's accessed on shared private driveways. And when I visited the site, and I went up to the Ortiz property, and I, you know, I had my GPS out, I was looking at the maps, I was looking at parcel boundaries, and I have a high level of confidence that I know where this tower is going to be located, within a few feet, one way or the other. And I can confidently say that this will negatively impact this neighborhood. If by no other reason than just the visual impact alone, something between twenty-three and fifty foot of cell towers sticking up above the forest top line. This is also an area where it's not just Douglas fir and pine trees. There are deciduous trees there as well. And I was there before the oaks leafed out. And you can see through the trees at this site, which is to say that even the base of the tower will be visible at least in the winter months. So we're really talking about more than just twenty-three to fifty feet of cell tower top being exposed. There's also the issue of topography in this neighborhood. This is not, this is not simple topography out there. It's not flat. It's not a simple hillside. It's a lot of very tight little hills and valleys, sort of classic Mendocino County mountain top, people being located and nestled in valleys and on hillsides. And where the site is located is, it's like a reverse donut hole, if that makes sense, where the donut hole is actually protruding, and then all these homes that are located around that are actually at the level of the cell tower. And it's not just one home, or two homes, or three homes. This will visually impact this neighborhood. We've heard about it through the letters. We've heard about it through the phone calls. And I saw it for myself and was quite honestly shocked about how nestled into a neighborhood this is. And I'm very concerned about the impact that it's going to have on the neighbors. So again, significant impacts to the Pine Mountain neighborhood, visual especially. But I believe there's also transportation and road impacts, potential impacts to the community water system that have not been adequately addressed in the initial study. I also feel that the findings are not met the required findings that are necessary to move forward with this use permit, in particularly county code section twenty point one nine six point zero two zero, which would say that the project does not constitute a nuisance, that it would not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, or general welfare, not only of those that live there, but even those that are passing through there. I cannot with confidence say that it will not have those impacts, and I do not believe those findings can be made. And that's where I am on this.
Okay, and Allison, this is in your third district. Let's see, I'm not seeing anyone else that wants to come online from the commissioners. Oh, I do. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes, I have to say, my real concern is the aesthetics, that this may impact the neighborhood. I was under the impression that we were going to have some type of faux branching. I didn't, maybe I missed this, or I just, I wasn't paying attention. But without some type of camouflage or faux branching, I have a real problem with this tower. I've seen what AT&amp;T can do with these towers, or I'm not sure it's AT&amp;T or Epic, but they do an excellent job many times with camouflaging these towers. And I try to put myself in a position, if I lived in that area, I don't have a problem with the access, with some of the environmental issues. But I do have a problem with the aesthetics, and I I really need to have an assurance that they're doing more than just putting up a cell tower tripod and not putting up some type of faux branching. It makes a difference. It makes a big difference to me.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if AT&amp;T or Epic wanted to comment on Commissioner Jacobson's comments?
Yes, Jared Kirstley here with Epic and AT&amp;T. The driving factor for our proposal of a lattice tower had to do with setback requirements from the county. We have to maintain five hundred percent setback to the adjacent dwellings. When I say five hundred percent setback, it's of the tower's height. So if this tower is one hundred and forty-three feet tall, that would yield a seven hundred and fifteen foot setback to any dwelling around it, and we are currently maintaining that precisely to the Schultz property to the east. If we change it to a monopine, you have an added ten feet of height for a tree topper, per se, which has to be included in the total height of the tower. So that would encroach on our setback to the dwelling. That was the main driver. It could be, it could be switched to a monopine if that would alleviate aesthetical concerns, then we would also be encroaching on the setback.
Commissioner Jacobson, did you want to address that?
Well, just as far as I'm concerned, that's an issue, and that may be something that you might have to consider.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing now that we're at the point of either making a motion or continuing as had been mentioned. But our next meeting then would be June. What was the date on that?
June fourth would be your next agenda.
With staff, that would be the only item on the agenda if it were to be continued. It could not be continued to the following meeting. That would be the eighteenth, the day after the deadline. So I'm looking for commissioners as to what you would like to do at this point. Anyone want to make a comment?
I will not be making a motion for approval if it appears that there might be other commissioners' support for a motion for denial. I would look to staff to help us craft that.
Thank you. Julia Ackert Krog, Chief Planner. So if this commission provides staff, either by making a motion towards a denial and/or is considering that approach, staff would want you to, we would request that you please continue this to the June fourth agenda and give direction to staff on the findings and reasons for the basis of denial, so we could prepare resolutions that would reflect both a potential approval or a potential denial of the tower for your consideration.
Mr. Hope Camp? Commissioner Hope Camp?
I wanted to ask staff to clarify. I am appreciating Commissioner Purnell's position, but what happens if we make the motion and the vote goes against it?
And I'm sorry, I may be confused. Do you mean a motion for approval or a motion?
Yeah, I mean, what if this motion got made and seconded and everybody voted no? Yeah, I mean, what if this motion got made and seconded and everybody voted no? What happens then?
So if there was a motion for approval and all the commissioners except for those who made the motion and seconded the motion voted no, that motion would fail. Then we would entertain a new motion, which would likely be for denial. And the commission would have to vote on that. And depending, you need to have a majority action in one way or another in order for something to be approved. So if you have a 3-3 vote, that motion fails.
So Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, Chief Planner Crogg is correct. A 3-3 vote in either way would fail. That motion would not pass. Majority of the Planning Commission's membership needs to vote in favor of a particular action, whether it be for approval or denial. If there was a motion to approve that was brought forward and voted on and it failed, whether by a 2-4 vote or a 3-3 vote, then that action would not go forward. If that was the case, then I think the next request of staff would be for direction from the commission regarding, as Ms. Crogg said, regarding the reasons to support findings for denial and to continue that to the next meeting to give staff time to bring a resolution forward.
I don't get why if the motion in favor fails, we need to do a motion for denial.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, it's actually required, I believe, under the federal law. Also, it's good practice in any event to have something denying a project in writing that gives the basis for the applicant to appeal that to the board and it's specific as what the reasons for denial were.
Okay. Well, in that case, I would support Commissioner Purnell's request to continue it and develop findings for denial.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes, why? So my question is, couldn't a commissioner make a request for denial and then get seconded? And then if it passes as the commission were denying this, because in the past that's what we did at some point, why can't we just proceed with that?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, denial should be provided in writing to the applicant so they can have the opportunity to appeal that to the Board of Supervisors. And if we wanted to give just straight to a motion for denial, I'd ask that it be a tentative motion for denial and then give direction to staff to prepare a written resolution with the findings, with facts to support the findings as to why being denied.
Right. I agree. And I meant that to be part of the question, that obviously we need findings for both the county and the applicant. Thank you.
So I believe, uh, Mr. Perkins, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I guess I wanted to weigh in a little bit on what I'm thinking here. I'm conflicted. I definitely am swayed by the community that this project would serve and their response to it. I also try to kind of take myself out of that vacuum a little bit and think about, for example, last year Mendocino County and the Economic Development Finance Corporation hosted an economic summit in Willets where there were stakeholders from all over the county and public from all over the county that came. And one of the top concerns at that economic development summit was broadband capability and safe cellphone access to rural parts of the county. And like I said, I'm swayed by the quantity of letters from the local community opposed to this. But at the same time, I know that it's been a priority for the Board of Supervisors and many folks in the county to expand coverage of cellphone and broadband service. So just because those folks who we've heard from at board meetings about extended coverage and folks that we've heard in our, you know, professional and private lives kind of lament the counties, you know, falling behind in that way. You know, they didn't write letters today, but I have heard that from county residents for years. And so I'm kind of torn between that, what I know is a need for the county and what I think many people in the county believe we need. But again, this local community that this one project would serve has pretty overwhelmingly spoken against it. So I'm kind of torn between those things. So if a motion were made to direct staff to create findings for denial, I'd be very interested in what that sounds like, what that looks like. Aside from statements that are made that aren't necessarily germane to approval of this use permit, I'd like to see what those findings look like. And I'm I'm not sure how I'd vote on that if it came back to the commission in two weeks.
Mitch Schultz, if I could address the commission for a second? Because I have some information they need to know about. And that is that we are not well-served as a county. As far as cell coverage and Commissioner Perkins, it would be wrong for me to not add on to what he said about economic development. I'm from that world. And when you look at our county, we're one of the worst served on cell coverage and internet access in the entire, all 58 counties. I just was briefed on that. You know, as many of you know, we're trying to apply for $300 million of funding to do a much-needed fiber optic underground system. But it's, you know, very expensive and everybody's applying to the CPUC right now. No guarantee we're going to get it. But these numbers I heard, which are very alarming, that we have like a little over 20,000 people connected out of 36,000 homes. We're 70%. And there's been meetings before the board where they've said, we want to get to 98%. My concern is only that this may not be the tower location you support. But just that this is going to be 450 people that will never get connected unless we do something else. And we don't have, at least I don't know of the resources the county has to put fiber optic out there. I don't think there's any. And I know our budget's being severely impacted by this COVID-19 pandemic. But there's, this will be 400 people or so we can't contact if there's a fire that rages through there. And that's just, I have a public safety concern about, you know, boy, I hope somebody doesn't get hurt because we didn't have access for them. Or from an economic development standpoint, I think teleworking is the future. And this might connect up some people who could stay out in that rural area and run their businesses. So that we're going to cut off, that they can't run their business. But again, you have a lot of issues to consider, but I wanted to throw that out about. And by the way, I do not agree with the, I think his name was, Mr. Drell's stating, we didn't do our sequel right. We did our sequel right. We did this process right. Mark did an excellent job. And Julia did. We did nothing wrong in that sequel. And I've watched Sequel stuff for 35 years. It's excellent. But it's, again, it's your final decision, but you need to know we're way behind on cell coverage as a county.
I would just like to pipe in on that comment because we've been behind since I got involved with it in 2008. And we've gotten a lot of cell towers since then and nothing has improved that I can see. And if this particular one is opposed by the residents purportedly served, I don't see how that makes a big economic development difference. I've been around this issue a long time in this county and it doesn't change. And so.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Jacobson wanted to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see this proposed for disapproval at this point and send it back to staff. I would like to see this tower work. But looking at to where we are right now, it doesn't look like it is going to be approved. So like I say, my biggest issue is the aesthetics with this tower. And if AT&amp;T and Epic and staff can work something out where we have more of a monopine-type tower, I would be in favor of that.
Commissioner Wedeman, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just want to say I'm on satellite. I'm like two miles. I'm not in a very rural area. But we still have, and I run a business and so there's other ways of accessing the internet and, you know, having high-speed internet. That's really being wildfire from the coast, right? That's happening, right? That people are bouncing off of each other. Not to say we don't need this. We want to be, you know, 21st century all the way. I get that. But I think, obviously, it's location. I think it's the location that's the big issue here in a neighborhood that it's supposed to serve, but yet they're saying we don't want this in our neighborhood where it's located. So I would be ready, willing for somebody to make a motion and let the chips fall where they fall so that staff has some direction.
If we are ready for a motion, I have one to make.
Commissioner, go for it.
All right. This may need some correction, but I move that staff, well, that we continue this item and give staff the chance to develop a written resolution for denial of this project with associated findings.
I believe you need to have a date on that, Commissioner Purnell, for our next meeting.
When is our next planning commission date? I don't have a calendar handy.
It is June 4th, 2020.
Okay, so that would be a continuance until June 4th, 2020.
I would.
So we have a second from two people? Who would like to second it?
Whoever.
Madeline, you can second it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So I believe we need a roll call vote. I don't know if, Julia, if you wanted to restate or maybe even Matt weigh in on the legality of how this motion is submitted.
Sure. So the motion done by Commissioner Purnell was to continue this matter to the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission agenda and provide, with direction to staff to provide an alternate resolution for denial. And that was seconded by Commissioner Holtkamp. And then as staff, my only comment on this is we will need some clear direction from the Planning Commission today on what the reasons are for denial so we can prepare a revised resolution to reflect your reasons for denial of the project.
Thank you. And County Counsel Matt, do you have any comments or help for it?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, no. I think that Chief Planner Crogg stated that accurately. I liked her wording of the motion and as part of that, I appreciate some discussion. In fact, hopefully before even we take a vote on that, would appreciate discussion and direction by the commission regarding reasons for denial.
Thank you. I think I will start with Commissioner Purnell on that item. I think you had some ideas already on that, if I'm not mistaken.
And reasons for denial would include visual and/or aesthetic impact. In particular, looking at the initial study, we've got items 1C and 1D. In addition to that, there may be impacts to the utilities, which I understand if the project were to be, a proposed project were to be approved, that there would be this whole process of figuring out where the utilities are. However, I would like to see an analysis of, you know, where those water lines are. It shouldn't be too hard to get. Do they run through the site? It seems like there's some real potential impacts there. And then also to my earlier point about, I do not believe that the project as proposed meets the required findings from county code 20.196.020. And we heard that loud and clear through the extensive public comment.
Quick comment by Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. And that's the finding, that language they're referring to is what we're looking for, the rationale to support saying those aren't met. So I think we've heard clearly that on based of visual impacts and aesthetics, the Planning Commission does not believe, say for instance, paragraph C would be met. I think staff will take direction from the commission about the utility issue as well. Are there any other rationales by the Planning Commission as to how those findings would not be met?
Commissioner Holtkamp, you're not on mute. You had nothing to add?
No.
I believe that is it then. So.
Marilyn, what about adding D? That the use preserves the integrity of the zoning district? On 21.96.020. Add D. Have staff look at D, too. You captured C. I think D may have some relevance.
So Chief Planner Acker-Crogg here. I think what the commission isn't hearing from us is that what we need is we need your basis of how this project does not meet those required findings. So we need you to explain why it does not preserve the integrity of the zoning district or why it is considered a nuisance to the public. That's the direction we're really seeking.
I guess Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, short of that direction to staff to review whether this project does preserve the integrity of the zoning district could be taken. And we would review to see what of this in particular would not preserve such integrity. And then the commission would have a chance to review that.
Is it also a basis for findings that the community served is less than interested in the service?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, we have guidelines and standards and ordinance requirements. And I don't necessarily know that out of all those, that community opposition necessarily drives that it's a nuisance because we have standards for defining how it's a nuisance and conditions to attempt to remedy that. So I don't know that I would recommend.
Well, I meant more the necessity of the service since many public comments seem to reflect that they're doing just fine for service.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I'm not aware that in the context of applicants to the county for what they're going to do on their property is necessarily whether the community as a whole thinks it's necessary. You know, most, if we get any use permit application for a lot of different uses on a property, I think generally speaking, the county has looked at those as that's something that the applicant wants to undertake. And I'm not sure we viewed community opposition or whether it's deemed as necessary at this point in time is determinative.
Okay. It was just a question whether that was a basis.
If planning asks for their comments, then I'll have to look to them.
Commissioner Perkins?
I have a question for other commissioners who are recommending staff return of findings based on the aesthetics and the visual impact. I know Commissioner Jacobson had mentioned, you know, monopine being something he would be more supportive of. I'm curious if, as far as the commission's concerned, if there's an aesthetic version of this project that would be acceptable, whether it be related to height or design, that might not be appropriate for the applicant. They might not agree that that's a feasible project. But I'm curious if there's a version of this project that could come back that would not have the aesthetic impacts to the community that we're asking for staff to review.
So I guess that's a question. Maybe we could probably start with Commissioner Jacobson. I know that was your first concern and then we'll go on to Commissioner Wedeman.
That is my biggest concern with this project is the aesthetics and the detriment to the to the land values of the surrounding properties. And I really feel like if we could, if Epic or AT&amp;T could put together a project which included something comparable to a monopine, then I would be more inclined to approve a project such as this.
My point, I want to clarify my point and ask. My point, and I want to clarify my point in asking the question, is that if, if there's a version of the project the applicant could submit that would satisfy everybody on the aesthetics ground, I'd like to give them that kind of direction. If there's not, because of the location, that's another story. But if there is an aesthetic version of the project we could support and they're willing to provide it, I'd like to give that option. I know that doesn't address the other concerns about infrastructure and that sort of thing. But for the aesthetic concern, I'm wondering if that can be solved.
And I think Commissioner Jacobson agrees that, yes, he would be supportive with some type of monopine or improving the acidic value. Commissioner Wedeman, what did you have to add to that?
That's not mine. I mean, it's the problem. The look is a problem, I get that. But it's really the location. What I hear from the citizens is that there's too many people who live in that area who are against this cell tower being located where it is. I don't care what it looks like. That's what I'm getting. That's how I interpret over 200 things I've read. So, and therefore, that becomes, to me, when you're looking at 2196.020 findings, right, of C, you know, it's right there. It becomes a nuisance.
So it's, I believe then that Commissioner Jacobson, yeah, in answer to your question, Commissioner Perkins, yes, Commissioner Jacobson would be interested in that. Commissioner Wedeman would not. Commissioner Holt Camp, do you have a feel for that? And then we'll go to Commissioner Purnell.
I guess I'm willing to stick with the aesthetics. What really bothers me the most is that they want to serve people who don't want to be served. And the idea that they can just plunk it down without any public support really bugs me. And maybe we're hemmed in by the laws and that can't be it. I agree that the aesthetic problem is a problem. But I don't know. It seems like public opposition ought to be a pretty good reason. People who live out on Pine Mountain didn't go there because they were in a high-tech hub.
Commissioner Purnell?
On the point of the aesthetics and would they be mitigated with a monopine-type solution, I suspect we're going to run into setback issues with that because of the increased height requirements. And I think I would anticipate that we're still going to hear from residents of the Pine Mountain subdivision that just because a cell tower, which may now actually be 10 feet taller, now looks like a giant tree, I think it's still going to be an assault to the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I mean, there's a tree line out there. And if there's a monopine that's now sticking up 50 feet tall than everything else, we're not tricking anybody, it's still a cell tower. And so I suspect that we're still going to run into strong public opposition. The issue is an aesthetic one because of the sighting, because of where it is. It is right outside people's living room windows. It's in the middle of a neighborhood. So all of that to say, coming back with a monopine solution probably wouldn't change my mind because I don't think it's going to change my constituents' minds.
That's fair, I appreciate it. Like I said, the reason I asked is I didn't want us to find reasons for denial that the applicant could address. So if there's no way they could address it, I understand and I'm fine to move forward.
So I think at this point, we really need to know whether or not there are enough findings based on the discussions that we've had for a motion of denial to be created.
So here's what I've captured so far. Julia Acker-Crog, Chief Planner. So I've understood the concerns relating to visual, concerns relating to visual and aesthetic impacts, specifically calling upon items 1C and 1D out of the initial study. And then the secondary was impacts to utilities. I understood that there was a desire to have analysis of where they are in relation to the project site and whether or not they will be impacted. That would be outside of a resolution. I just want to be clear about that. And then additionally, that the Commission has expressed, they do not feel that it meets the findings of 20.196.020, including preserving the integrity of the zoning district, and that the community served does not want the service and that the location is the issue in this regard. So I don't know if you want to elaborate at all on 20.196.020 findings, which are the use permit findings, at all. I mean, staff can do our best attempt at addressing these. Of course, I'd always love as clear direction as possible on it. But, you know, we can always try to prepare them. And if we have missed the mark, there would be a subsequent meeting for you to elaborate on what findings you would like added to that.
I'm a little concerned about the subsequent meeting that you mentioned, Julia. I thought we only had June 4th was about our drop dead date. Is that correct?
That's the date I mean, because we won't be taking action today nor will staff be preparing a revised resolution today. So that subsequent meeting is the June 4th meeting that I'm referring to.
Thank you. And I'm not certain, but yes, Commissioner Purnell?
Oh, just to Julia's point about any additional direction from the Commission on how to flesh out the code section 20.196.020, I think that the biggest evidence for the project creating a detriment, especially to safety, peace, morals, and comfort, comes directly from the overwhelming public comment that we've heard. I know the numbers are changing. Last I heard, 133 letters, 15 in favor. I did note that many of the letters that came in in favor last night were from out-of-area people. And so even amongst those 15 in support, many of them do not even live in the Willets area. All of that to say, I think that's our strongest evidence that that code section is not met. It's just all of the overwhelming comments to that point exactly. I don't know if that's helpful.
That was helpful. Thank you, Commissioner Purnell.
Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, to Chief Planner Crog, could I just have you restate the motion and kind of a summary of the direction as well? I think we have a tentative motion for Commission to vote on for the continuance and preparation of a motion, a resolution for denial.
Yes, that's correct. So Julia Acker-Crog, Chief Planner, there was a motion made by Commissioner Purnell to continue this matter to the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission Agenda with direction to staff to prepare an alternate resolution for denial. And that was seconded by Commissioner Holt Camp. And the direction that we have received as of this time from the Commission is, in terms of preparation for the denial, tentative denial resolution would be related to visual and aesthetic impacts, impacts to utilities, failure to meet the findings of 20.196.020 specifically related to the detriment to safety, peace, and morals, and additionally related to preserving the integrity of the zoning district. And then the last two, which are really sort of related to what I just stated, is about the community served does not want this service and about the location really being the concern.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes, regarding the aesthetics on this project, how do we know what the, how the community would feel about something like a more, less impactful tower at this point? I mean, we know there's definitely concerns with the tower that's proposed, but we really don't know how they feel about something that wasn't quite as in-your-face tower where we had more of a monotype. I don't know. I'm not real clear as to how this process is going to work. I presume staff is going to come up with something that we then send back out to the public? Is that what's going to happen?
Julia Acker-Crog, Chief Planner. So what would happen is that for the June 4th, 2020 Agenda, we would, there would be no new public notice sent since the motion at this time is to continue to a date certain. So there would be no new public notice. But what we would be doing is posting on the agenda page the revised resolution, a tentative resolution for denial. And any additional information, the public would still get the opportunity to provide comment during the June 4th, 2020 meeting. So I hope that answers your question or if there's anything more specific.
No, it does, Julia. Thank you.
I believe then we are at a roll call vote. Is that correct? Commissioner Jacobson, your question has been answered. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then I think we're ready to go ahead.
Commissioner Holt Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Carol Ogilvy?
I think that was a yes. So with that, okay, good. So with that, the motion carries. And so this item is continued to the June 4th, 2020 Agenda. And again, I just want to reiterate for the public that there will not be a new public notice posted for the June 4th Agenda. So you are hereby notified as part of this meeting that this item will be heard again on June 4th, 2020 at 9:00 a.m.
And just a question for staff. Is there any point in AT&amp;T, Epic Wireless attending that meeting? Certainly, they have their choice. But is there anything, if they would like to come back with another option, would it be beneficial for them or not?
So certainly, we always encourage the applicant to be present at a future agenda for a discussion on this item. But if there was a revised proposal, that would really be that the item would be remanded back to staff because we would have to conduct an entirely new evaluation of how that tower conforms with the wireless communication guidelines as well as our zoning code and plans, special land use plans.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think we've completed Item 6A then?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll go on with matters from staff?
We have no matters from staff today, but we are available for questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to matters from Commission. Any items from the Commission? Seeing nothing, then a motion to, yes, I do see something. But you have to.
Very. I did want to say that I do think we could figure out a way to have public meetings. Every time I walk to the County Administrative Center, I walk up that driveway and right there is Pummelita's playing field with two sets of bleachers. And it seems like if we really need to have public meetings, and I agree, this works pretty well for more routine things. This was clearly one that would have been better with a public meeting. Maybe for the time being, we could figure out some social distancing way, maybe in cooperation with the school district to do that. I just want to put it in the hopper to be thought about. We don't have to decide now or anything. But I just keep seeing those two sets of empty bleachers there and people could be there and pretty spread out. And all we have to do is get a PA system, I think. So think about it. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holt Camp. We will certainly take that under advisement and try to work with our Council and see, and the Health Officer to see what options may be available to us.
And maybe we'll never have another so controversial item during this time. But if we do, I keep walking by there and seeing it and thinking, hmm.
Yes, I understand. Thank you very much for that comment.
And I would just comment, too. I had mentioned, you know, possibly a larger hall where you could social distance further away. The school, the high school across the street and the gymnasium. You know, maybe it would be too warm outside just during the summer, that sort of thing. Carl Pretty Hall or some of those. And of course, you know, I know there would be some expense to renting Carl Pretty Hall and I'm not sure about the school. But yeah, I agree, there are possibly other avenues to do that. How much longer will be having to social distance? Sounds like at least in the summer. So I think I'd like to see it addressed as well. Thank you, Madeline.
So Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, as a brief response to that, obviously, I think the county as a whole, whether it's for the Board or the Commission, is working with the Health Officer and the State of California's Department of Public Health on how we can hold meetings in general and what kind of gatherings there are. So in terms of the feasibility of how those things could be happen, I don't think we have any sense of moving forward on those kind of gatherings just yet. To the extent those health orders and the Health Officer are broadened in the future, we will certainly take that into consideration as we deal with noticing meetings going forward.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes, I just want to, before everybody leaves or we close, I just want to thank the Commission and also staff. These are, and if AT&amp;T was still on, their staff, too. These are complicated, hard issues to, for any board, any Commission, to have to work with. And I think as a Commissioner, and, you know, I just appreciate communities in times where people seem to be, sometimes we lose the community input from people. And I'm sorry that they have to input to feel like they're protecting themselves, which is fine. But I just appreciate, you know, all the work that went into this and also the community input. That's all I'm saying. And stay safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Purnell?
And if I may, I would like to echo Commissioner Wedeman's sentiments there. And thanks, staff, for taking this next leap to trying to do this tele-comment, which is not perfect, but we were able to get more input that way. And I think it was meaningful. It was maybe odd and discombobulating at times when we were having all of that feedback. But you hung in there. So thank you, Julia, and staff for that. That's really, really appreciated. And yeah, thank you, everybody. I mean, these are not, these are not normal times and we're all still trying, and that is worth a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner Purnell. Commissioner Holt Camp, you're not muted, but I didn't know if you had anything to add?
No.
Okay. Well, I would just like to add my thank you especially to staff and all the Commissioners for weighing in and being there. It is a struggle, but I appreciate all of your assistance in getting through it. And with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
All opposed, deck.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Cheryl.
All right.
All right.
Two weeks, whatever, June 4th.
Yep.